Good evening, everyone. It is 5:36 PM. We have a quorum at the dais, and I'm calling this canvas of the election and swearing in of the candidates, meeting and regular city council meeting to order. We are going to start with the pledge of allegiance. It's going to be given by Jimena, Reboya Castillo, and Clarissa Vasquez, students from Camino Real Elementary's Girls Who Code. This is a group of third, fourth, and fifth grade girls who are learning to write code. So ladies, come on up here.
Pass.
(inaudible)
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 Thank you.
Good job.
So, wait, stay up here. Stay up here. Stay up here.
(laughing)
(inaudible)
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 All right, ready?
(inaudible)
All right.
(applause)
And everyone stay standing for a moment, and we are going to have Reverend Bernie Jackson lead us in the invocation.
Would you all please join me as we lift and make our petitions known to Almighty God? Father, in the name of Jesus, we come before you, thanking you again, God, to bring our concerns and our petitions and our hearts' desires before you, God. And tonight, Father, we ask that you would bless all of these that are before me that have voluntarily decided, God, to serve your people. Father, I ask that you bless those that are leaving, that have served, and those that are coming on to serve together. Unite them, Lord God, that they would be willing and ready to do the good for the citizens of Bastrop. Help the citizens of Bastrop, dear God, tonight. Make a determination, God, in your word, to work with this body, God, that we're all working on one accord to be able to do the things that we need to do to benefit generations to come. Let us allow, Lord God, the past to be the past. Turn the page, God, and look at this new chapter, and be led by your Holy Spirit. We thank you, God, for all of these that are serving and those that are here, God, to be served. Bless the city, Father, in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
So we are going to start with item number three, election results. Sorry, item four, election results. 4A, consider and act on resolution number R 2025-92 to canvass the results of the May 3, 2025 general election for the Bastrop Council members, place one and place five, and the special mayoral election. So we have here at the dais an updated resolution with the final vote tallies that are here. For mayor, we have Willie De La Rosa with 441 votes, Ward Northcott with 219 votes, Ishmael Harris with 625 votes, city council member place one, Perry Low at 870 votes, Cecilia Serna 372 votes, city council member place five, John Kirkland 716 votes, and Cheryl Lee 561 votes. In our form of government, in order to advance into a council seat or the mayor's role, one needs to get a majority of the votes cast at that election, which means 50% plus one additional vote. And no one hit that level for mayor, so we are going to need to call a runoff election this evening. But for the two council seats, after we canvass this vote, then we can go into the process for swearing in those, or that individual into the seat, and myself, back into my seat as well. So council, do you have any questions or a motion for this item?
Second.
Hold on. There we go. All right. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve from councilperson Plunkett, a second from councilperson Meyer. And any other discussion, council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Okay, the motion carries unanimously. So we now have the results of the election. Now we're moving on to item 5A, recognition of outgoing council member Cheryl Lee. Councilperson Lee is out of town today and was not able to make the meeting, and so she is not here.
Counselor.
I'm sorry? Ah, excellent. We have a plaque that we're going to present to her that the city manager is holding right there, and we'll make sure that she receives that. Council, any other comments?
I'd like to read what's on.
Okay, sure.
To councilmember Cheryl Lee, in grateful appreciation for your outstanding service and dedication during your tenure on the Bastrop City Council, and to the citizens of the city of Bastrop, city council member from May 2022 to May 2025.
Councilperson Fosser.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize councilmember Lee, especially since she's not here to hear these words. But, so she's in Washington DC right now, attending the U.S. Chamber of Commerce legislative briefing. She got a special invitation, which includes a dinner with Congressman Michael McCall, and legislative briefings at the U.S. Capitol, so of course she went. But I do want to say some kind words in her honor. I'd like to recognize her for her three years of service up here in the hot seat. She brought a certain studiousness to the role, which I always appreciated. She spent many hours reading, researching, calling contacts at other cities, taking classes through TML, and earning her CMO, the Certified Municipal Official Designation. And truly, she is a voracious researcher, and she's fearless in seeking answers, and her skill sets and passions were well utilized in this role, and I wish her much success and prosperity in all her endeavors. Thank you, councilmember Lee.
Thank you, councilperson Fosser. So we're now going to move on to the oath of office. 6A, incumbent councilmember John Kirkland, place five. So we will go do this.
Councilmember, do I say, "Welcome back to the new old councilmember"?
Yes.
Or something like that?
Yes.
You will please raise your right hand, and please your left hand on the Bible, and repeat after me. "I, John Kirkland..."
"I, John Kirkland."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I have not directly or indirectly..."
"That I have not directly or indirectly."
"...paid, offered, promised to pay..."
"Paid, offered, or promised to pay."
"...contributed or promised to contribute..."
"Contributed or promised to contribute."
"...any money or thing of value..."
"Any money or thing of value."
"...or promised any public office..."
"Or promised any public office."
"...or employment..."
"Or employment."
"...for the giving or withholding..."
"For the giving or withholding."
"...of a vote..."
"Of a vote."
"...at the election at which I was elected..."
"At the election for which I was elected."
"...or as a reward..."
"Or as a reward."
"...to secure my appointment..."
"To secure my appointment."
"...or confirmation..."
"Or confirmation."
"...whichever the case may be..."
"Whichever the case may be."
"So help me, God."
"So help me, God."
All right, good job. That's one down. You'll raise your right hand again, please, councilmember. Repeat after me. "I, John Kirkland..."
"I, John Kirkland."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I will faithfully execute..."
"That I will faithfully execute."
"...the duties of the office..."
"The duties of the office."
"...of city council member place five..."
"Of city council member place five."
"...of the city of Bastrop..."
"Of the city of Bastrop."
"...of the state of Texas..."
"Of the state of Texas."
"...and will to the best..."
"And will to the best."
"...of my ability..."
"Of my ability."
"...preserve, protect, and defend..."
"Preserve, protect, and defend."
"...the Constitution and laws..."
"The Constitution and laws."
"...of the United States..."
"Of the United States."
"...and of this state..."
"And of this state."
"So help me, God."
"So help me, God."
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You bet. Congratulations.
(inaudible)
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 Hey Perry, are you left-handed also?
Yes, we just adopted.
(laughing)
Oh, that's perfect.
Yeah.
(laughing)
(inaudible)
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 Congratulations.
Thank you.
(applause)
Now get back to work.
Yeah, that's right. I'm all shiny and brand-new now. So it says, "Welcome by the council" and "Comments by councilmember Kirkland." You know, I, running a campaign is not fun, but it's rewarding all by itself because the opportunity, you know, I knocked on so many doors that, you know, being a software developer, a statistics guy, someone that does analysis of things, you know, I talked to literally hundreds of people. I know who they are, I know what houses they live in, and I know the counts, and I know how many of them voted. And I heard stories from all over Bastrop every single day for, you know, six weeks of knocking on people's doors. And it gives you a feel for what the people of our community want, and it reminds you of who we are. And so that's the, that's the value of a campaign. And it's, parts of it are not fun, but there's other parts, like I said, extremely rewarding. So, you know, I went door-to-door and said, "We needed to preserve the historic nature of our small town. We needed to protect the leadership and stability of our town, and then we needed to advance." And on advancement, we have a whole bunch of retail development that's coming, and the way I would tell people is every cluster of four or five medium-sized buildings is going to round up to about a million dollars a year in sales tax. And we should have had that four and five years ago, but there were just things in the process rules and such that prevented that. But now we're able to turn those things on, and each one of those things, you know, a million dollars is what our library costs us every year. And so the opportunity to bring lifestyle improvements to the city of Bastrop, you know, the size of a library, every time we get another million dollars in tax collection, is going to be meaningful to our residents as our town grows. And so let's get some work done. And that's what I have to say. Councilperson Meyer.
Yes, John, I just want to welcome you back.
Well, thank you.
It's been a long time.
I know, yes.
And just thank you, because I've been here two years now, in May, and I so appreciate your knowledge and wisdom and just helping me understand things from a whole different perspective. And I love it that we're, you're the logical side, and believe it or not, I'm the emotional side that gets very passionate about things. I don't know if I ever show that or not, but it's a great balance, and I'm very thankful. But the main thing I want to say is, I know from the beginning, John's heart is with the people of this town. He serves the people. He made that very clear. He's only been committed to the people for the past two years I've been here, and I'm sure that's what's going to happen in the next three years he's serving. So welcome back, John.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Oh, councilperson Fosser.
I mean, I'll jump in.
Yeah?
I always appreciate your respectful way, the respectful way in which we communicate and which we always talk about agenda items and whatever issues we have before us, and I look forward to more of that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Councilperson Plunkett.
Okay, you know me. Ditto.
(laughing) Perfect. So we're going to move on to item 6B, incoming councilmember Perry Low, place one, swearing in the oath of office by the Honorable Chris Dugan, State District Judge, District 423.
All right. You can't forget the family. You got elected because of them. All right, if you will raise your right hand, but put your left hand on the Bible. Oh, y'all can be in the picture.
(laughing)
Come on, baby.
Oh, of course.
There you go.
There we go. All right. If you will please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Wait, are you ready? No, she's not ready. Sorry, she's not ready. No, no. Repeat after me, please. "I, Perry Low..."
"I, Perry Low."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I have not directly..."
"I have not directly."
"...or indirectly..."
"Or indirectly."
"...paid, offered, promised to pay..."
"Paid, offered, or promised to pay."
"...contributed or promised to contribute..."
"Contributed or promised to contribute."
"...any money or thing..."
"Any money or thing."
"...of value..."
"Of value."
"...or promised any public office..."
"Or promised any public office."
"...or employment..."
"Or employment."
"...for the giving..."
"For the giving."
"...or withholding..."
"Or withholding."
"...of a vote..."
"Of a vote."
"...at the election at which I was elected..."
"At the election at which I was elected."
"...or as a reward..."
"Or as a reward."
"...to secure my appointment..."
"To secure my appointment."
"...or confirmation..."
"Or confirmation."
"...whichever the case may be..."
"Whichever the case may be."
"So help me, God."
"So help me, God."
Good job. All right, one down, one to go. "I, Perry Low..."
"I, Perry Low."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I have not directly..."
"I have not directly."
"...or indirectly..."
"Or indirectly."
"...paid, offered, promised to pay..."
"Paid, offered, or promised to pay."
"...contributed or promised to contribute..."
"Contributed or promised to contribute."
"...any money or thing..."
"Any money or thing."
"...of value..."
"Of value."
"...or promised any public office..."
"Or promised any public office."
"...or employment..."
"Or employment."
"...for the giving..."
"For the giving."
"...or withholding..."
"Or withholding."
"...of a vote..."
"Of a vote."
"...at the election at which I was elected..."
"At the election at which I was elected."
"...or as a reward..."
"Or as a reward."
"...to secure my appointment..."
"To secure my appointment."
"...or confirmation..."
"Or confirmation."
"...whichever the case may be..."
"Whichever the case may be."
"So help me, God."
"So help me, God."
Good job. All right, one down, one to go. "I, Perry Low..."
"I, Perry Low."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I will faithfully execute..."
"I will faithfully execute."
"...the duties of the office..."
"The duties of the office."
"...of city council member place one..."
"Of city council member place one."
"...of the city of Bastrop..."
"Of the city of Bastrop."
"...of the state of Texas..."
"Of the state of Texas."
"...and will to the best..."
"And will to the best."
"...of my ability..."
"Of my ability."
"...preserve, protect, and defend..."
"Preserve, protect, and defend."
"...the Constitution and laws..."
"The Constitution and laws."
"...of the United States..."
"Of the United States."
"...and of this state..."
"And of this state."
"So help me, God."
"So help me, God."
Congratulations, councilmember.
(applause)
Yep.
(laughing)
(inaudible)
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 Counselor, if I could get you to sign right here.
(applause)
And right there. And that's, okay. All right, three left-handers. I like it.
(laughing)
(inaudible)
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 Counselor, if I could get you to sign right here.
(applause)
And right there. And that's, okay. All right, three left-handers. I like it.
(laughing)
(inaudible)
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 And right there. And that's, okay. All right, three left-handers. I like it.
(laughing)
(inaudible)
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 All right, three left-handers. I like it.
(laughing)
(inaudible)
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 Well, let me be the first to say welcome, Councilmember Lowe.
Thank you for the welcome. I look forward to getting to work. I'm supposed to have a few words?
If you'd like.
Okay, alright. Against the recommendation of my wife, I had to write things down. I'm a former DJ, so we talk all the time and we know how to, you know, eat up time, so I don't want to belabor this and I want to thank everybody. First off, I thank God for the opportunity to serve and the opportunity that he gave me to be a beacon of light in the community and the things that he's assigned my hands to do. And I always choose service, especially when you ask God to get the information. And I really appreciate the opportunity that God has given me to stand before you. I'm deeply honored and humbled to be sworn in as the new Bastrop City Councilmember, place one. First off, thank you to my wife for her unwavering support, my mother-in-law for her on-time advice, my brother Pat, he always makes me laugh and always gives me that sense of realism in the conversation. It's good to see my grandson, Case, in here, my daughter Perry, and my daughter Alicia, and also my granddaughter, Aria, she's back there playing around. So I thank you to the people of Bastrop for placing your trust in me. I don't take this responsibility lightly. To my family, friends, and supporters, to all those who believe in a vision of a more inclusive, transparent, and people-powered Bastrop, thank you. Your encouragement, your conversations, and your commitment to our community carry this campaign and this moment. To my fellow council members, city staff, and community partners, I look forward to working with you collaboratively to address the challenges we face and to build on the many opportunities that are before us. Together we'll champion responsible growth, preserve the spirit of our historic town, and make sure every voice in Bastrop is heard and valued. Let's get to work together. Thank you.
That's right, let's get to work. Councilperson Meyer.
Thank you, and I just want to say, Perry, it is such an honor to have you sitting next to me. I've told you for a long time, we've talked, you've been wanting to serve for a long time, I know, but to have you sitting next to me and serve is a very big honor for me because I know what your heart is. Perry and I belong in a special club of all the people up here because we're homegrown. We were born and raised in Bastrop, so that's a very, very special thing. And I know that your love for this town is going to give every citizen in this city the best that they can get. So thank you, Perry.
Councilperson Fosser.
Okay, I gotta jump in. There's three qualities I've always admired about you and also the reason why I knew you would be up here soon. The first and the most important one is that, like, you couldn't stay away. Like, you were here, you kept showing up, like, I was just watching you, like, burn with interest and passion. And it's like, there's no truer, like, fire than that, like, watching you burn and get closer and closer and be interested. And I just, it's been a treat to watch you get closer and closer and now you're up here. So that's the first and most undeniable quality. Your second is your team player-ness. You're just such a natural team player. And the third is how independent you are. And it's fun to find a team player and an independent-natured person and the same person because it's gonna be, it's just gonna be wonderful up here having your qualities. And I really admire and appreciate you, and I'm glad you're here. Yeah.
Councilperson Plunkett.
I just want to thank you for ushering in a new day, and I look forward to working with you.
There's nobody that can say a louder "thank you" than me, so, thank you, thank you, thank you.
So, Councilperson Lowe.
It was an honor to run the race alongside you, and I look forward to the service ahead. And let's get to work. Okay, well, we are going to kind of suspend the rest of the items on the agenda until 6:30. We are all going to break for some cake and punch, as if we had just gotten married. And, and so, at about 6:15, council, I want us to go back to executive session, and then we'll spend about 15 minutes back there discussing some items that are on the executive session agenda. We will come back at 6:30, starting the meeting at its usual time. Yes, I do, thank you. And then we will start with item seven. Councilperson Plunkett just reminded me that I should read out the executive session items before going in there, so I'll go ahead and do those. 9A, City Council should convene into a closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551071 and Section 551072 to seek advice of legal counsel to discuss the implications of the City of Austin's aquifer storage and recovery project on the City of Bastrop's water supply. And item 9B, City Council should convene into closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551071 and 551072 to seek legal counsel and discuss the potential acquisition of real estate adjacent to Chamber Street within the City of Bastrop. And so when we go into executive session, those will be the things we talk about. And we are now in recess. Okay, let's get this started again. So it is 6:30 PM. Council has returned from recess, and from our executive session, we have no action to take from the executive session. So we are going to move on to citizens' comments that I'm moving up to this part of the agenda. I do have a number of people that have signed up to speak. I will, first of all, I'm gonna, David Barrow said that he does not wish to speak. He's expressing his opposition on 9A and 9B. David Barrow said he does not wish to speak in recording his opposition of 16D. So I'm gonna set those aside. And then we have Garland H. Stillwell says that you wish to speak. Come on up. Is the microphone?
Yes.
Give us your name, your address, and then you will have three minutes.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Garland Stillwell. I'm the executive administrative assistant for Halcat Trust, 246 Bob's Trail. This is an informational briefing. During the May 1st Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission considered the proposal for Bastrop County Municipal District 5. It was approved to be sent forward for consideration. I believe this council reviews it on the 27th. There was a condition with that approval that all property line issues be resolved. The purpose of my testimony is to just explain the origin of that, and I'll be followed by Ms. Patty Jacobs at some point, who'll go into further detail. If I can direct your attention to the overhead above Ms. Carrillo, 246, I'm sorry, 24280 is the lot that Halcat Trust is the property owner. If you go to the east, you're looking at parcel, I should say, 26974, which is the subject of the proposed HUD District 5, otherwise the Ironwood Development. This is 200, approximately 284 acres. If you can follow the laser light, it's a little faint, but this is Bob's Trail, going down for the Bob's Trail, Lower Red Rock, 304. This is north, and this point here is a quadrupoint between our property, the two lots owned by Patricia Jacobs, and the lot proposed for the Ironwood Mud. During the May 1st meeting, we were able to see the survey plaque for the first time. Ms. Jacobs brought to our attention, because we also share a fence line, a entrance, as well as a grazing lease with Ms. Jacobs, that her fence line actually is further in to the Ironwood property. And that's not reflected on any of the site plans or the survey plans. So this was brought up during the Planning and Zoning Commission with the directive, I lost track of time, but with the directive, that the developer and the engineer works with us to resolve that. It was reported that a certificate of ownership was presented to the proposed developer. However, Ms. Jacobs, and she'll go into her presentation in more detail, really has an adverse possession claim which would not be reflected. And if you look at this quadrupoint, as that fence goes further north, it actually radiates out. So we're in the process of determining the exact square footage of encroachment, and Ms. Jacobs will go into that issue in a little bit more detail. I think I've run out of time. Just, if there are no further questions, that concludes my briefing.
Thank you very much. Next is Patty Moore.
Hi, in this, I'm going to talk about the city and council and the zoning, you know, interchangeably to avoid any kind of technicalities here. So Patty Moore, 165 Trigg Road, and I do have property within 300 feet of the proposed mud. This is going ahead to next week so we can get some points in here. Okay, so, three points. Point one, I'm here to ask that this council stop Number 5 mud, or at least do not go forward until various impact studies are completed, commented, and reflected upon. Why? The decision for this mud's approval was based upon the builders' word that they would get this mud automatically with or without zoning approval. And with this impression, it would be fast and a breeze to get. Along with this was the city's belief that the mud would go forward with or without them, only without the city, without it, the city would not get the tax base. Through research and speaking to agencies, I find getting the mud without city approval is not as projected. True, there is a process for state approval, but the road at this point in this year is lengthy. The process, I'm told, is two years, but let's just be conservative and say it can be two years, involving comment periods and committee hearings. At any rate, it is likely the developer would walk away, is it likely the developer would walk away from city wastewater if the city paused the project? County septic requirements are half an acre per living unit, multi-high-rise units, well, it gets a little murky whether you can have a septic or not, and consider the markability of septic versus wastewater system, and the city being the only route for continued wastewater. I don't see the developer leaving the city, even if they pause. So I propose that moving forward with the mud 5 due to tax-based loss is no longer a valid reason to approve the mud, and as such, I ask the city to pause or stop this mud for further studies. Point two is the Migratory Bird Treaty Act of 1918. This is a federal law that enforces international treaties to federally protect migratory birds and their habitats. Which birds are migratory? It's almost endless. The list is vast, but anyone on 304 sees the abundant migrating eagerts, who by the way, serve a very important service to the area. Other examples of migrating birds, I'm told, next door are cranes, an Aaron with permanent residence, and nearby is a bald eagle, and of course, the painted bunnies I spoke of last week. Not to mention the doved ducks and geese that come through this area each year. Do note, there is even a company in Austin that helps developers follow state and these federal laws. Council, I hope for Earth Day to be every day in your decision-making. The survival of wildlife depends on your decisions and for their protection. Ultimately, may your decisions reflect your city Earth Day celebration ideals. You've had a big celebration. I know someone in there must value this. Point three, nearby are natural springs, so I request a water impact study not only for the protection of these wonderful natural occurrences, but for the sustainability of our aquifers for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynda Garcia.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmembers and staff.
Can you, before you start, can you give us your name and address?
I'm coming to, I'm sorry. My name is Lynda Garcia, and I live at 102 Axis Trail in Casino Ranch, Bastrop, Texas.
Thank you.
This area is currently in the county, and I realize that I'm a county member, but the mud is also right now in the county. And so I am not just blowing in the wind, as I was told at the Planning and Zoning Commission. We, the mud is advertised to put 1,300 houses on 289 acres. This is kind of misleading because they, at the Planning and Zoning Commission, they told us that 50 acres would be given to parks, maybe reclamation ponds. 1.5 acres would go to the ESD and Police Department, which would return to the developer if they didn't use it in five years. So no one told us how much would be used for the commercial property. So therefore, we're going to put 1,300 houses on a maximum of 237 acres, not 289. State Highway 304 with this development is being laid out, is one-way in each direction with a center lane for turns. There have been multiple cars that have used this center lane as a passing lane, leading to close calls with head-on accidents. It is currently hard to get onto and off of 304 from Casino Ranch, Jacobs Landing, and multiple houses on 304, adding the traffic from 1,300 units. Plus, commercial businesses will make gridlock. State Highway 304 was designed to provide a drainage reservoir along the Casino Ranch side of the roadway. The road slopes toward, from west to east at this point, which is towards Casino Ranch. Upon arrival of Hurricane Harvey's torrential rains in August 2017, runoff from 304 filled the TexDOT reservoir, and it was supposed to handle this runoff. It actually flooded the first two rows of houses in Casino Ranch. I have a small depression on the north side of my lot that I was told I could not fence because that makes a pathway for water to run to the river. The Ironwood Development mud would add multiple square feet of impervious cover and has identified, has areas of identified floodplain where previously there would have been undeveloped land to help absorb some of this water. This will create a significant flooding threat. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Patricia Jacobs.
Good afternoon. My name is Patricia Jacobs. I live at 510 Highway 304, and my ranch is the one next to the mud. I am here today to reference the condition which was placed on the Bastrop, by the Bastrop Zoning and Planning Commission's recommendation that the Municipal District Mud, Number 5, land consent be approved by the Bastrop City Council. The condition was that before the mud could move forward, for approval, all property line disputes should be resolved. These disputes were brought forward to the Zoning and Planning Commission by myself, Patricia Jacobs, at 510 Highway 304, and Karen Cathy at 246 Bob's Trail. We each hold properties adjacent to the currently proposed mud. In the documentation presented to the Zoning and Planning Commission, the legal description, the survey map, and the concept attachment show the mud property lines extending over current fence lines and entrances belonging to myself and Ms. Cathy. The fence lines have existed for well over 40 years in their current possessions, and the said entrances have existed since Bob's Trail was created by the County of Bastrop, also well over 40 years. It should be noted that the mud-proposed property line along Bob's Trail extends over and to the other side of the road, despite the fact that this is an overlapping Bastrop County right of easement, Bastrop, excuse me, Bastrop County right-of-way easement. As of this date, the current owner of the said mud has made no effort to contact either myself, or Ms. Cathy, or her respective representatives. Our contact information was given to the engineer, who was at the Zoning and Planning Commission meeting, where we pointed out the disputed property lines. He did not offer to give us contact information to reach the mud owner. Please make, please let me make clear to the City Council that these fences and entrances have been in place since my father and mother bought the property in 1969. They are administered to, repaired, and rewired, and kept in overall good condition with the understanding that they followed the property lines. Neither John Albright nor Dr. McFarland, the two previous owners of the property, currently being considered for the proposed mud, ever contested or brought suit against the placement of these fences. Within the statute of limitations, time period is outlined in Acts 1985, 69th Legislature, Chapter 959, Section 1, effective September 1, 1985, amended by Acts 2021, 87th Legislature, RS, Chapter 94, Senate Bill 885, Section 1, effective September 1, 2021. This is Section 16.026, and that is adverse possession. Let me also please make it clear, I have no intentions of either moving the current fences, nor giving up the entrance to my backfield, nor does Ms. Cathy have any intentions of forfeiting her property for this proposed mud. It behooves the City Council to encourage the current owner of the proposed mud to contact us so that the solution can be worked out. Thank you.
Thank you. Rita Ward. Ms. Ward, your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Rita Ward, 442 Old Austin Highway. Okay?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I think this is for all of us. When I grew up, I was raised that I was put on this earth in a little bitty piece of property. And when I left this earth, it was supposed to be in a better place. And we have been chasing the almighty dollar, and that has been our god now. And we need to think about what is good for our state, what is good for Bastrop. And we need to work together. Forget about being a Democrat, a liberal, or a Republican, or whatever. Let's all work together and do what's right. And I know that a lot of these companies are coming in, developers, and they've got money to give to people. Well, Andy Weir has been working his tail off to save our water. He's not doing it for money, or to be elevated, or anything. He's doing it for the love of Texas. And I think that we all need to get together, get a recycling plant here, and work together, regardless of what we say we are. We're all Texans. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Becky Wumble.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Council and City Manager. My name is Becky Wumble. I'm the proud president and CEO of the four-star, soon-to-be-five-star-accredited Bastrop Chamber of Commerce, located at 927 Main Street. I am here tonight to congratulate the Bridging Bastrop Board for a job well done on their Work in Bastrop Hiring Event. If you did not know, this event occurred on April 30th, and it was part of their work plan under the leadership of Sheila Lowe. From 9:00 to 11:00 that day, there was a job fair readiness workshop for job seekers, and then the event itself was a hiring event from 10:00 to 2:00. I want to share some statistics with you. We know and can document 274 attendees that pre-registered. I can tell you from staying there at the door, there was a lot of people who did not pre-registered, who just came in. There was 34 employer booths. There was more than half of the Bridging Bastrop Board there, working the event themselves. There was four of the five chamber staff working there. And I want to give a huge shout-out to my Vice President, Jamie Haney, who worked very closely with the Bridging Bastrop Board on behalf of the chamber. And then there was the entire Workforce Solutions staff who worked the event as well. Workforce Solutions said that this Work in Bastrop Hiring Event was the first for them, and they have never seen anything so well-done. One employer wrote in the post-event survey, "Thank you for hosting this event. It was one of the best job fairs I've attended, and I got a lot of applicants." That was Phoebe Taber from the Renewal by Anderson Company. It was success because of the vision of this board, working hand-in-hand with the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce, who provided access to employers, the resources of Workforce Solutions, and then the City of Bastrop for providing the venue. This is what happens when we work together in collaboration with a shared vision. Again, thank you to the Bridging Bastrop Board and the leadership of Sheila Lowe.
Okay, that concludes the citizen comments portion of our evening. There are two individuals signed up on the very last agenda item, so I haven't forgotten about you, but that's later. We are going to now move on to the Mayor Pro Tem's report, item 11A. And 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 different events that I went to, along with several of these council members next to me at, in the last two weeks, mind you, while running for reelection. So it was a very busy season. I think the ones that I'd like to highlight is on April 25th, I attended the opening night at the Opera House and presented one of those comically large checks to them for their historic renovation that they're expanding into the building next door. So the City of Bastrop donated $100,000 as a down payment, a first step towards helping them start their historic renovation. On the 28th, I attended the Governor's Prayer Breakfast, which started promptly at 6:00 AM in Round Rock, Texas, at the Kalahari Resort, and saw our own Jeff Connor there as well, so that was kind of nice. May 1st, I led a prayer for the City of Bastrop at the National Day of Prayer Ceremony, held on the courthouse lawn. We all attended a courtyard Marriott groundbreaking on May 5th. I spoke on May 7th at the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce luncheon, honoring our first responders. We discussed, we had a special Fairview Cemetery Board meeting to discuss what the rocks should look like in the columbarium and what arrangement they should have. You'll notice, and this is gonna break you now, but this is the large rock side of the council chambers, and this is the small rock side of the council chambers. And if you've never noticed that before, now you'll never be able to unsee it. So you can thank me later for that. Most of us attended the Best, which is Bastrop Elgin, Smithville, Texas Mixer at the Boring Bodega this week. And then I had the pleasure of attending on May 10th, the Chubby Knuckle Choir performance, where our newly-elected councilperson, Mr. Lowe, played the drums. And so, like I said, it's been a busy season. Let's move on to council members' reports, and let's start with Mr. Councilmember Lowe.
Good evening, guys. Y'all doing alright out there? Yeah, I was at the Best Mixer as well. That was at the Bodega. Yeah, I was at the Best Mixer as well that was at the Bodega. It was a good event. Got to meet a lot of people and talk about issues in the city. So that was also a good time. And met a lot of people that, my classmates, I'm in the Best Leadership Program that Becky's doing with the chamber, doing a great job with that. We will have our final meeting this week on Thursday, and it's for graduation. So I'm encouraging anyone that wants to get in that program to do that. It's a good program. Also, too, I was at Copper Shot this weekend, and I was playing music. So that was a nice thing to do and get out and do that. Because of the election and everything going on, we had to keep the band members in limbo. So it was good to get out and get a little bit of the frustration out on the drums. And that's pretty much it. Well, that's pretty much it.
Councilperson Meyer.
Thank you. So I bet Councilmember Plunkett's going to talk about the Emil Elementary class coming. So I'm going to let him have that, because that was a blast. Viviana and Victoria and Councilmember Plunkett and I were so happy that the Emil, four classes from Emil Elementary came. And they actually held a council meeting, and they did so wonderful. In fact, they had so many cheers from their classmates, doing such a great job. I said, "Wouldn't it be amazing if we could get that?" Like when we have real council meetings. But they did a great job. And I know Councilmember Plunkett's going to tell you more, but the most rewarding thing was when they were leaving, one of the little boys said, "How do I get to be up there?" And I said, "When you can vote and you live in the city, I expect you to want to be up here." So that was the most inspiring thing for the whole event. The other thing I want to remind everyone about this Friday is the spring game at the Earhart Stadium, which means the JV and Varsity Football Teams are going to have their spring game from Bastrop High School. But at 2:45 is the Powderpuff Game where the girls play. Flat, it's not tackle, it's flat. And then following that, the boys will play. So please support the kids and go to Earhart Field this Friday.
And you said you're playing, right?
Yeah, I'm playing, right. I am, yeah.
Councilperson Plunkett, sounds like you have an assignment.
Yeah, like she left me anything to talk about.
Well, what did they pass?
Let's see. Emil will now be allowed to have cupcakes at the school, which I don't know.
Important business.
I would imagine they probably were before. And also, I believe they chose a carnival rather than a dance. So they did a really good job of bringing up relevant comments to, they did citizen comments, they did the little girl who was the mayor, she did an amazing job. She told everybody to state your name and address, and you have three minutes. It was very cool. And, but no, it was a great.
Can we borrow her? Am I going to get you available?
Exactly. It was a great time. I think they learned something, and it was, yeah, of course, it was great for Councilmember Meyer and myself. And I went to a lot of events and did stuff y'all don't really care about.
Councilperson Foster, are your arms tired? You just flew in.
Oh, stop. Stop, stop. I just want to talk, I was going to talk about the Work in Bastrop event that Bridging Bastrop Board and Sheila Lowe pulled off beautifully with the chamber and Workforce Solutions and the city and the P E D C. But thank you, Becky, for giving it a full three minutes. That was wonderful to hear it out of your mouth. That was a wonderful event. Two things, Everhome Suites ribbon-cutting is tomorrow, got another hotel coming to town. And then also, the Bastrop Live Music Foundation is having a fundraiser Thursday, May 22, at Neighbors that night. That's all I got.
Okay, so we're now going to move on to Item 11C, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Right now, I would like to have Chief Stefanik come up front and center. She doesn't know this is quite happening right now, but please join your troops front and So Chief Stefanik's troops came and said, "We have something super special for Chief that we would like to present." We had it commissioned and made just for her. Her entire staff, not entire staff, because we've got to have folks on the road, right? But a vast majority of her staff is here. She has no clue, and that's why she's giving me looks that could kill. And I will hear it at tomorrow's director's report, but I will turn it over to your staff to let them recognize and give you your award.
My name is Nick Mollstrom, Patrol Lieutenant at the Police Department. So my name is Nick Mollstrom, I'm Patrol Lieutenant with the Bastrop Police Department. I'm here this evening because my colleagues and I wanted to acknowledge the most important, or the most vital part of our department for Officer Appreciation Week. During my tenure at the police department, I have had the pleasure of seeing significant progress changes that have positively impacted the police department, as well as constructively improved the safety and security of the residents and businesses of Bastrop. Chief Stefanik shared her vision and process for which we will implement growth of our department to accommodate the evolution of the city of Bastrop. With Chief Stefanik's leadership, there has been an immense increase in morale and optimistic growth throughout our agency. The Bastrop Police Department would like to present a small token of our appreciation for all the hard work she does for the officers, residents, and businesses of Bastrop. So this week is Officer Appreciation Week, it's the National Officer Appreciation Week, so that's why we're trying to give this to her today.
We want to see, we want to see. I've seen it, I've seen it. It's pretty awesome. She's going to be upset y'all didn't give her like an engraved gun. Very nice engraved handcuffs.
So they're engraved handcuffs, part of it is Bastrop Police Department, the other part of it is United States Marine.
Council feels safe standing, so you can be in the backdrop of the picture.
Thank y'all for letting me present this.
I think I've told most of you that Chief Stefanik is a Marine Corps fighter pilot, and she's not somebody you really want to mess with. She really takes it. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, for sure. I'll hear about it tomorrow. I'll hear about it tonight. All right, I'll let them exit right quick. So there are a couple of items, and I'll go through these quickly. Old Iron Bridge update, we did, we had the special council meeting. We're in our pre-construction phase. We expect mobilization in approximately ninety days. By next summer, we need to be on that bridge celebrating doing the spitting contest. We have Archer Western working on the water wells. They are overdue. The water wells should have been in service on Christmas Day. Right now, we have a backwash motor that is not performing as it should. They will be on-site 520 and 521 to get that resolved hopefully, and then also resolve the valves that are associated with that. Blakie Lane, Old Austin Highway, we do have an appraisal in process. Our agreement with the landowner was appraisal plus a ceiling, so we're hopeful we're going to get closer and closer to that and finally bring that to closure. And then the connection to Old Austin Highway, we have a roundabout in redesign. The roundabout that was designed by a prior engineer who I shall not name is not a safe, nor would it have passed TxDOT approval, so I'm asking the question why we paid for that, but that's a different story. Our wastewater plant expansion, we have a project kickoff this Thursday, 5:15, and that is with the reuse gang. That's everybody, the field trip that we made up to North Texas. Water Street, you've seen the signs that say "Construction in Progress." We are doing the boreings that will tell us how thick that base needs to be. They're doing a complete bore of Water Street. We're amending that since they're already here to go ahead and do the bore for Linden and Farms so that we're prepared when we're ready to do those next year. Settlements, I've received a lot of phone calls, and I'm sure you guys have. The settlements apartments, we are complete with our survey. We are getting price estimates for those sidewalks that are going to make it safer for our seniors there crossing. There's been a lot of concern about Blakie, about wagon wheel that would cut through from the, from Burleson East. It's not going to make an immediate cut-through. We do have to have some public safety improvements that would allow those seniors to cross much safer, so there's that. We have an absolutely good news item, and I need everybody's help, everybody at home who's listening, everybody in this audience who is listening. We have a qualified hotel project that was, that was special legislation that was awarded to us last session. That would allow us to build a hotel convention center. That was a specific footprint that was across the street. It didn't work across the street for a variety of reasons. We went back to the legislature this year and asked for not just a qualified hotel project, but expanding the capture of sales tax and hotel tax from that hotel. It was dying on the vine. Rep. Gerties did a Hail Mary and got it through the House. It is now going to be in the Senate. We need Senator Shortner, if he is listening, to please, please, please support. That would allow the plans to create the current convention center into a recreation center and move us back into a place where the residents have been asking us to be, and that is not put a hotel here on Chestnut. So please, please, please send Senator Shortner an email that says, "Please support HB 3196." That's all I have.
I'm sending the email right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, the rest of you can do it, too. Yes. It's asking me to put a subject in. I suppose I'd be done, so, okay. Well, then, we are going to call the City Manager's Report complete, and we're going to move on to Item 11D, which is a proclamation in recognition of April 27, 2025 as Bastrop, okay, Perry, it's Houston? Houston, Houston, okay. I've had that question answered different ways by different people. So Houston Tillotson Alumni Association Day in the city of Bastrop. Whereas in the 1950s, the original Bastrop chapter was established by O.D. Duchesne and Gene Sampson, Sr., and whereas the organization quickly earned recognition for its strong attendance and exceptional recruitment efforts, and whereas over time, the chapter became affiliated with the Houston Tillotson International Alumni Association, and whereas through this affiliation, the chapter organized successful fundraisers, raised scholarship funds for Bastrop County students, and made generous contributions to Houston Tillotson College, now Houston Tillotson University. And whereas their dedication extended to regular participation in the national conference in Austin, traveling by motorcade and consistently representing the chapter with the highest membership, and whereas in November 2022, the original Bastrop chapter made a pivotal decision to transform into the Bastrop Houston Tillotson, and whereas now operating as the Bastrop Alumni Association, this 501(c)(3) tax-exempt corporation continues its proud mission of recruiting members, supporting the university, and providing scholarships for students within the Bastrop Independent School District. Now therefore, I, John Kirkland, Acting Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim April 27, 2025 as Bastrop Houston Tillotson Alumni Association Day. And I have signed this and set the official city seal to it and on the 27th day of April 2025. So. Now, this was previously presented to, I don't actually, who was it presented to? Do you know? No? Somebody has it.
Do we have a rep here to accept that?
No, that's what I'm saying is I think it was previously given, and this is just a copy of it.
Okay.
This is a photocopy, yeah. And this next item is 11E, recognition of May 26, 2025 as Memorial Day with a joint proclamation with Bastrop County. Whereas Memorial Day was first proclaimed on May 5, 1868 by General John Logan, and whereas Memorial Day has been officially observed in the United States of America on the last Monday in May since Congress passed the National Holiday Act of 1971, and whereas Memorial Day is set aside to recognize and remember the veterans who died fighting for our nation and the liberties we enjoy, and whereas we owe a debt of gratitude for the sacrifices of the many men and women who answered and answer today the nation's call to patriotic duty, to those who fought and fight today with honor and valor to safeguard the American way of life, and whereas Bastrop County and the city of Bastrop join with people across the nation in remembrance of those who died serving their country during war and those who have died since their return home from war. And now therefore, we, John Kirkland, Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Bastrop, and Gregory Klaus, Bastrop County Judge, along with our respective city council and commissioners' courts proclaim Monday, May 26, 2025 as Memorial Day in the city of Bastrop and Bastrop County, and ask all citizens to join in this observance. And it's signed by Judge Gregory Klaus and myself. And that will be read and presented at the Memorial Day Ceremony at Fairview Cemetery. Next, we have Item 11F, Presentation and Recognition of a Life-Saving Award by Chief Stone. Who's this, Chris?
Yes, sir. That's, I know, it's hard. Mayor Pro Tem, Council, thank you for having me here tonight. Tonight, I'm here to represent the Bastrop Fire Department and award some citizens and firefighters a life-saving award. For a little bit of background, on April 8, a citizen of Bastrop, while working her shift at Hobby Lobby, suffered a cardiac event. And upon Hobby Lobby's announcement, two citizens came to her aid and started CPR. With the CPR, the Kaden EMS and Bastrop Fire shortly arrived on scene within three minutes and started life, advanced life-saving measures for the citizen. And luckily, we were able to get pulses back and transport her out by PHI. With a couple of facts for you just briefly is there are roughly 1,000 cardiac events a day suffered by people in the United States. Of that 1,000, 51% are witnessed. Of that 51%, only 40% have citizens come out and step up and help save the day. Of that 40%, 9% successfully make it to the hospital. Of that 9%, only 7% make it out of the hospital with no deficits. And today, I would like to have Luanne Patovich come up. Luanne Patovich was saved by two citizens, and she was able to leave the hospital days later with no deficits whatsoever, making it a rare event. Luanne, thank you for coming up. I'm, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Only 7%?
7%.
Thank y'all very much.
Now, Luanne, I would like to have you help me bring up the citizens and the firefighters that were there that day for you. And I would like to start out and call up Andrea Grant.
You've got some powerful hands, I tell ya. I'm kind of glad I was asleep.
Next, I'd like to call up Aubrey Marquette. Next up, I'd like to call up firefighter Carter Armbruster.
Thank you so much. Bless you.
Carter had a very busy first week on the fire.
Oh, really?
Next, I would like to... Next, I would like to have Lieutenant Morgan Laberan come up. And last but definitely not least, Assistant Chief Nicholas Lox.
Just for a second? So, um, you know, I got to comment on this at the Chamber of Commerce First Responders
I'm so appreciative.
Luncheon, but I want to say thank you because it's common to refer to, you know, first responders,
I tell ya, I'm so grateful, there's only, uh, when you get down to brass tacks, I'm eternally grateful, whether here or whether there.
people in the military, people that give service as heroes.
And guess what?
To this family, you're not just heroes.
I get to see my little grand daughter grow up.
I mean, you literally altered the course of history for this family.
Well, God be willing, huh?
And so, thank you for that.
And he was so willing, uh, the stories that these young ladies, and I can't imagine,
And then the second thing to note is that the initial life-saving efforts were started
you know, you'll probably have a story or two, too.
when a code red went over the loudspeaker at Hobby Lobby by two citizens.
But you just wouldn't believe how many, it's kinda like this, you know?
So I asked a question there, how many of you have your CPR certification up to date?
Things just perfectly melded together and I hadn't even known anything about anything.
Right? So that's some, but that's not all. So if you have a way to, to go and do that, you might yourself be in a situation where
And so, I'm happy to say I'm right here.
you can help save someone's life, as you've seen right here. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem. Mayor Pro Tem, just to go off what you added, the Bastrop Fire Department also partners with Ally, and we offer free CPR classes to any citizen in the city. So if you'd like to get your CPR card, please reach out to us and we are more than happy to have you, happy to help you get that.
Thank you. So before we move on to the Visit Bastrop presentation, we'll get to that shortly, we're gonna kinda go back in time on the agenda to some things that are near the very beginning that we skipped out on. Here we go, item 7A, election of a mayor pro tem. 7A, consider an act to elect a mayor pro tem. Well, council?
A move for status quo, John Kirkland.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for John Kirkland to continue being the mayor pro tem. Who's that guy? Any other discussion? Okay, council, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion carries unanimously. That guy will continue as mayor pro tem for one year. Item 8A, under runoff election, consider an act on resolution number R 2025-93, calling for a runoff election for mayor of the Bastrop City Council for a term of one year, designating the date of said election, designating polling places, designating early voting hours and places, directing posting and publication of notice for said election.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilperson Plunkett, a second from Councilperson Fosser. Any other comments, council? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries unanimously. We now have a runoff election called. Okay. Now, we'll go to item 11G, review and discuss Visit Bastrop's quarterly update presentation. Mr. Mike Pistana.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Kirkland, welcome back. You've been here for another year, council members and city manager Correa. Good evening, I'm Mike Pistana, and I serve as the interim president and CEO at Visit Bastrop. Ashton Lavente is our director of marketing at Visit Bastrop, and she was supposed to be here to join us today, but unfortunately, she's a little under the weather. So please bear with me as you're gonna have to put up with me for this whole presentation, so. Now, I think you have all that information in front of you, just, there was a couple slides earlier that were out of order. They're all there, there's one or two or three separate, if you, if something looks, look off, we'll cover it, we'll be there. And so we're gonna start with, let's go, okay, I got the clicker. These are the items we're gonna cover today. I'm really excited to present to you guys this evening. We're gonna cover our mission vision, current board of directors staff, some market updates and destination comparison, servicing partnership updates and collaboration participation, tourism economics website impact calculator, that's some really good data that we have coming, the marketing, advertising, and public relations, and then the website analytics and performance metrics, and we're gonna close with some place or AI data. First, just to do a quick refresher on our mission, whoops, went too quick there. Our mission at Visit Bastrop is to promote and develop Bastrop through a targeted destination strategy that drives economic growth and quality of place. And our vision is to champion Bastrop and the Lost Pines region branded experiences to facilitate local tourism, business development, education, and advocacy. This slide outlines our board and our staff rosters. Our board is comprised of 12 members, including nine voting members, and it's led by our chairman, Lee Harrell. Our staff of three is, continues to drive our mission forward despite the reduction of our staff from last year, we had five people, so we're down, we have three. Now, just quartering, this was really exciting for the hotel industry here. We had our first new hotel opening in Bastrop since 2010. The Everhome Suites opened at the end of February, located at 630 Agnes Street. The property is a 114-room hotel, it's an extended stay property. All units are studios or one-bedroom suites with fully equipped kitchens. And now with the 114 rooms, it's, it's the largest hotel in the city limits of Bastrop. And as Councilmember Fosser mentioned, behind her, in front of her big rocks, their grand opening celebration's tomorrow, so it's from 3:00 to 5:00. And if anyone's into dressing up, it's apparently 50s themed, so. But if you guys wanna come out, it's open to everyone to come out and get a tour of the property, some food and drinks. That's always fun. And now, we just wanted to showcase with the, with the opening of Everhome Suites, there are 12 hotels in the area that fall under our hotel tax collection. 12 branded hotels with several more on the way, as we know, there's 111-unit Home2 Suites under construction currently slated open in September. And then we had the groundbreaking, groundbreaking last week of the quarter of our Marriott. That'll open next year, a little, maybe next fall. And then there's a couple other hotel projects that are confirmed and coming, we have a QHP hopefully coming, so it's a really exciting time for the industry. Obviously, it creates more jobs, more visitors, and more tax revenue with the addition of these hotels. Now, this is just a quick snapshot for the quarter from some of the hotel results. The 60.3% ADR with a 200, I'm sorry, 60.3% occupancy with a $213 ADR. Room revenues were nearly $12 million. The occupancy increasing by 2.3 occupancy points was really a noteworthy gain considering that there was the addition of 114 more rooms a day at the end of February into the market. So that's a real positive sign. It showed the market absorbed the new hotel and still performed well. And then hotel increase, hotel revenue increased by about 1.3 million in Q2 versus prior year, and that's pretty significant as well, because that's an additional about $93,000 in hotel tax revenue generated by that increase. We've got a comparison of some other destinations in here. We were able to pull some data from some of the new information that we have. Now, they didn't have Q2 yet data, but they had year-end 2024, but I just wanted those to show you an example of what we are compared to some other cities. The common denominator in all these cities, they're close proximity to a large city, they have a downtown district, and are small to medium-sized community with an emphasis on tourism and conventions. So as you can see with Bastrop, we're highlighted with 64.9% occupancy and a $218 average rate, we're outperforming all these markets of similar makeup. And then if you, obviously, the, the height reason kind of skews the numbers a little bit, but even if you subtract that out, we still perform really strong with the 62.8% occupancy and 116 ADR. So again, this is just, we're trying to, I'm trying to dig into more of the data and look at some other, you know, just how do we compare against some other destinations? Now, Visit Bastrop continually services and partners with many types of groups and events. Here's some of the Q2 highlights. Main thing I wanted to point out is we coordinated two weeks of meals for training sessions with the Texas Parks and Wildlife, and that generated 17,000 dollars in revenue to 10 local restaurants. And then we developed a partnership with Warner Brothers for their high-profile Harry Potter experience over there at McKinney Russ Nature Park. And then they purchased advertising space in our Buc-E's kiosk, and we're able to help drive visitors to, to that, so. And then there's a couple other servicing updates. For MD Emerson, the items on the left are the, well, they're actually conference badges that we created and developed, and on the backside of the conference badge is an itinerary of things to do. And then on the right-hand side of the slide is, we collaborated with the Lost Pines to secure placement and develop the creative for an ad for their newly opened Riverbend Event Barn in Meet Texas Magazine, and this targets meeting planners. Now, Visit Bastrop, we're members of several tourism industry organizations, and we help support and participate in numerous statewide events. In Q2, we participated in the Texas Travel Alliance Unity Dinner, the Texas Association of CBV's Winter Conference, and the Destinations International Marketing and Communications Summit. Special thanks to Councilmember Plunkett for joining us in our delegation at the Unity Dinner in Austin, and then also attending that event, we're representatives from our board, our staff, Bastrop Main Street, and Bastrop County Tourism. Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland, I think you're gonna like this part of it. This is some, some analytics that, we had talked about this back in January, we had just invested in a new data analytics platform, it's called the Tourism Economics Website Impact Calculator. It attributes website traffic to physical visits. So we just got our first look at some data, so I just was trying to give you a sneak preview here. We'll, we'll be able to dive real deep into it soon, but this provides us a tool to analyze and communicate our own marketing impact, transforming our data into actionable insights. This first snapshot of preliminary data for Q2, really what it shows here of note is of, there's 1,254 visits that were traced to 72,000 impressions. So that means, so we can actually track now when people went to our website, that shows 1,254 actually traveled and were in Bastrop. And that's all tracked with geolocation technology. We'll soon be able to dive deeper into spend and things like that, but this is just a quick snapshot, kind of a dashboard, so there's a whole, whole bunch of stuff we have in there. What's interesting, too, of those who visited, this shows 32% went downtown, 2.2% of those visitors visited the Hampton Inn. Heather's here, so that's good for Heather. And the South Side BBQ even got 0.5% of those visitors. So again, this is just some, some early stuff that we have. The next slide's all part of the data.
Can you hold on one second?
Yep.
One of the things that I find notable about this is the average exposure to visit. So it's 26 days from when they visit the website to when they visit Bastrop. So what I kinda take away from that is that we should be targeting our marketing efforts on the website for things that are happening next month, not as much today.
Oh, 100%. And that's what, yeah, you can see, it's 26% at the 15 to 30 days. Of course, closer in's the, the highest number, but yes, that's the type of data we can dive into now. And then on this next slide, what you're gonna see is this attributes to performance, the performance page has physical visits and visits per 1,000 impressions. Our homepage is tops with 13,200 impressions, with the events page leading the way for those who visited. So those who visited, but this shows, and there's a lot of numbers on here now, but 400 people actually went to the event page. Our, our Bastrop Mardi Gras landing page had the best performance of visits per 1,000 impressions with 143, so that was a good number there. And then additionally, the dashboard showcases what markets attracted the most impressions and visits. So we have Austin area leading the way, probably not a surprise, but on the far left, it's kinda in order of Austin, San Antonio, Houston, Dallas, Fort Worth. So what's great is this dashboard provides us a tool to analyze and communicate our own marketing impact, transporting, transporting data into actionable insights. So we can even in the dashboard live, click into those cities and dive deeper on some stuff. So again, just kind of a sneak preview, we're still learning this too, and there's just now, the data will keep increasing, it just started tracing basically our Google SEO and any kind of campaigns we have out on the market, anything we have that, so we always direct people back to our website now, we'll be able to know if they're really visiting here, and then we can target them in the future for further insights. Here's the part Ashton was taking care of, so we're gonna, we'll get through this. TorTex.com is one of our largest planning resources for free text and tourism, and what's important about showing this, kinda relates back to the, what I just showed you, the website impact calculator. We, we have an advertising campaign on here, and it looks pretty much like a microsite of our own website. It always delivers really positive results, some highlights for the quarter where there was 390 redirects to visitbastrop.com, resulting in 3,343 page views. We had about 1,187 social media engagements. And again, moving forward, we have the ability through our Tourism Economic WIC to, to track these TorTex.com website directs, read back to us, and then see if those people actually traveled. So again, we can look at the money we're spending on advertising and see how that correlates back to, to spend. This is just our social media goals. I'm gonna skip, we'll skip through this because there's some goals, we're gonna talk about some of the results here in a few more slides. This is a recap of PR activities, next couple slides, some highlights included, we generated 32 media stories with $85,000 in advertising value. Some of the featured topics included Bastrop Mardi Gras, Valentine's Day events, clamping, small-town charm, and famous movie and film locations. And this slide just showcased some of the print and digital publications that featured these stories about Bastrop that were a result of the PR efforts. Notable are the Austin American Statement, World Atlas, and The Morning Time, just to name a few. We have some more website analytics and metrics. So our websites are call to action for everything that we do, and even now more so than ever due to the website impact calculator tool. So for Q2, we totaled 53,000 users, which were spending an average of about 1 minute and 2 seconds on the site. That's pretty, pretty competitive for the DMO industry. Dallas was by far a top-performing market with Austin second and Houston third. And then some more website traffic, of our 70,000-plus website sessions that we had for the quarter, 98% are new users to the site, and that's pretty standard because a lot of people go to the site, and then once they make their trip, they stop going to the site until their next trip, so it's kinda how it works. Top pages, top pages visited were our trip planning, dining, and then our events pages. And then of note, 76% of the users view our site on a mobile phone or a tablet, 24% on your PC. So what's important about that is, as you create content and develop, and we all know, most of us are looking at it first on your website. Sometimes we have this great email, but it looks great on the PC, but on your phone, someone can't read it, so you gotta make sure we're developing things the right way and having web, web, mobile sensitive websites, things of that nature. This chart just compares your, your website sessions for visitbastrop.com through Q2, and again, what, just a quick snapshot of this shows, the dark blue bar at top is this fiscal year versus last year. So it represents that the currently, it's showing that as a result of all the marketing PR efforts that we kinda just went through, website traffic's consistently outperformed last year's numbers across, across both quarters, so, pretty good. And you can see the evident flows of the seasonality as well, it always dips in the winter and then starts going up in the spring and summers. We publish multiple blogs annually, and in Q2, we focus on key visitor, key visitor interests like nature, food, and seasonal experiences. Our top-performing blogs included Eight Reasons to Visit Bastrop, Bird Watching Guide, and Bastrop Run Spots. What's, what's important about these blogs, they help tell the story of Bastrop in an authentic way, and it offers useful information into Of our 70,000-plus website sessions that we had for the quarter, 98% are new users to the site, and that's pretty standard because you, a lot of people go to the site, and then once they make their trip, they stop going to the site until their next trip. So it's kind of how it works. Top pages visited were our trip planning, dining, and then our events pages. And then of note, 76% of the users view our site on a mobile phone or a tablet, 24% on your PC. So what's important about that is, as you create content and develop, and we all know, most of us are looking at it first on your website. Sometimes we have this great email, but it looks great on the PC, but on your phone, someone can't read it. So you got to make sure we're developing things the right way and having web, mobile sensitive websites, things of that nature. This chart just compares year-over-year website sessions for visit Bastrop.com through Q2. And again, what, just a quick snapshot of this shows, the dark blue bar at top is this fiscal year versus last year. So it represents that the currently, it's showing that as a result of all the marketing PR efforts that we kind of just went through, website traffic consistently outperformed last year's numbers across both quarters. So pretty good, and you can see the other flows of the seasonality as well. It always dips in the winter and then starts going up in the spring and summers. We publish multiple blogs annually, and in Q2, we focus on key visitor interests like nature, food, and seasonal experiences. Our top-performing blogs included Eight Reasons to Visit Bastrop, Bird Watching Guide, and Bastrop Run Spots. What's important about these blogs, they help tell the story of Bastrop in an authentic way, and it offers useful information into trip planning for visitors. The blogs will drive engagement, they'll boost website traffic, and they'll help us connect with potential visitors. And again, we'll be able to start tracking these blogs as people are redirected to our website and the impact that they're actually visiting here. And that's just a recap of some of the blogs and what they look like on our website. Okay, and here's, so how do we measure our results, right? So these are the key performance metrics that are outlined in our services agreement. I know there's a lot of data on this slide, but I'll just highlight a few of the key takeaways. And this is in your packet, we just kind of just highlighted it as well, the columns. Overall, website performance is on track or ahead of pace to meet our annual goals. There's been over 151,000 sessions year-to-date, with the target being about 254,000. Organic traffic and repeat visitor volume, or both are trending positively. Paid search campaigns generated nearly 32,000 sessions year-to-date, which is showing a good ROI. Visitor guide requests and e-newsletter opt-ins are pacing steadily. Our open rates remain strong at 32% to 34%, which is well above industry averages, and our click-through rates are slightly below goal, but they're improving, so we'll keep an eye on those. And then as far as social media engagement, it's exceeding our expectations. Facebook engagement rate is at 5.8%. Our goal was 5.5%. And then Instagram's also grown steadily with 150 new followers year-to-date. So there's a lot of information on there. And then here's just the last thing we're going to cover today, some more data and metrics. The final item is our Bastrop visitor metrics. We launched Placer AI in January as well to better understand visitor trends using real-time location data. This is a sample of some of the data that we can pull, just kind of a quick snapshot here. Over the last 12 months, Bastrop welcomed 3.3 million out-of-market visitors. So out-of-market generally means outside of a 50-mile type radius. That's a 0.9% increase year-over-year, so a slight increase, but it is an increase. 106,000 of those visits were overnight stays, which generated 235,000 total room nights. Downtown hosted 195 events, attracting 83,000 attendees from both local and visiting audiences. And then our top visitor markets are Houston, DFW, San Antonio, McAllen, and Bryan College And again, that system, we can dive into a lot of things. There's all kinds of maps and graphs and BARTs. So these are just some of the insights that are available, and they'll help make us make more data-informed decisions about marketing, event support, and destination strategy as we move forward. And we're just going to, this is just the last one. Now that we've actively been using Placer AI, not only for destination insights, but also to help support the city and local partners with data that helps evaluate their event success. In just the last quarter, we provided several detailed attendance and insights for events like Corvent Invasion, Bastrop Mardi Gras, River of Lights, Mayfest Park. So these are a response to requests that we received from the convention center city staff and event planners. You know, we're really excited when we get these requests because we can show, this further highlights of their value to our stakeholders by positioning Visit Bastrop as a trusted source for credible, consistent event data that informs future funding, planning, and strategic decisions. So that concludes my update. As you've seen, we've been making meaningful progress across multiple fronts, from improving market performance and expanding digital reach to strengthening our partnerships and leveraging data to guide our decisions. We remain focused on driving visitation, supporting our hotel partners and local community, and generating measurable economic impact for the city of Bastrop. Thank you all for your continued support and guidance, and I'm happy to address any questions or provide information you may have.
Councilperson Fosser.
Yes, I have a question, please. For the Placer AI, the type of subscription or membership you have, is it, do you get to ask unlimited number of events, or is it a certain number each year?
Unlimited.
Unlimited?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and do you all pull those, or does?
We have access to a system. It's a dashboard, and we can go in and conserve dates, timeframes, cities. We have points of interest throughout the city, so we have custom points that we can have just downtown. We can, like all the hotels, we can have City Hall. We can see how many people come into City Hall, you know, roughly, and then where they came from, and then their visitor movements. So it's more of one of these live, you can be in it live doing stuff, the reports. Our many pages along that was this one slide they had put in, but yeah, some really good insights. So happy to show you more, and you know, come by me.
Councilperson Meyer.
Thank you, and I appreciate your presentation. And I just want to clarify, because we're in it deep, you know, and you're in it because we hear this, so our citizens don't understand. And I want people to understand that this is a marketing organization that markets. So when we see a picture of the Ever Home Suites, Visit Bastrop did not bring Ever Home Suites. That's our development services. They market that. So I just want you to understand it's through marketing that that's involved. But my question is, because in your vision, it says to facilitate local tourism, which is wonderful, because we have so many wonderful things for people to come see, but those involve our community assets. So how does Visit Bastrop without cost to our community assets, how do they support our community assets?
Community assets, meaning the?
That would be the Opera House, the museum, cultural arts. Those are our?
Yeah, we promote marketing them as well. I mean, we're only as good as the events and things that are going around in town, so we're constantly meeting with them, and Ashton does that side of it, meets with them, helps come up with ideas. But yeah, anything they're doing, we're a source of putting that out. And again, we're always promoting inward to Bastrop. So we're, you know, you've got the social media and all that and those kind of platforms, but we are strategically, like you saw Dallas was a top market, and Houston. So sometimes there's things that people locally might not see that we're doing, but it's out there driving people into the city. And so yeah, no, we're always working with them and doing that kind of stuff.
Great, that's because I just wanted, that's so important for us as a community, and I want to make sure our big percentage does look inward, not just outward, to our community assets at free of charge, though, not charging our community assets.
Well, that's the best part about us. We don't, there's no, we don't charge a fee for anything we do, even to, for example, meeting and event planners. We're also selling the destination and selling hotel space.
Has that changed, Mike? Because I know in the past, our community assets have had to pay.
I haven't been here that long, so I wasn't aware that.
And it could have been before you.
They shouldn't have to pay us anything.
Exactly.
The only thing, the only thing, I mean, and I was speculating, if there was a co-op opportunity, meaning someone wanted to do an ad, and they come up with the idea, like in a magazine or a digital, maybe it was a billboard, and they wanted to share the expense, that's the only thing I can think of when you do that, but.
And you haven't been here long, so I.
Perhaps Councilmember Fosser can answer.
Yeah, community assets used to pay for ad space in the visitor guide, yeah.
They, just to be clear, community assets paid for ads, ad space. I just want to make that very clear.
Okay, in the visitor guide, got it. Well, we're redoing our visitor guide right now, so I believe that's gone away. I'll look into it. Yeah, yeah. We're, because we're, obviously, we're funded through the hotel occupancy tax, so yeah. So and again, as more hotels come, that's more hotel taxes for everyone, and, but that's, again, that's why we're funded by that, so that our services are provided. So again, I can't speak to prior to me and what kind of things were going, so I don't want to also misspeak from previous, but yes, that's what I would like to see.
No, thank you, Mike. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
Anything else? Okay, thank you for your time. I know that was a lot of things to cover. I appreciate it.
We're going to move on to item 13A, review and discuss the Development Services and Finance Department funds. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Let me see who's first. James Cowley will present. We have James and Development Services and Finance tonight.
Good afternoon, everyone. Let's see where we're at up here. So basically, this is a Development Service Department overview. We have the kind of different categories, but it all falls under one department. Within this department, you have the Planning and Development Technicians. You have the Combination Inspector Plan Reviewers. And then we also, this past year, in working with PD, we have Code Compliance and Animal Control, which Robert does a great job at. Basically, the main thing you're going to see across the board on top of all these, our number-one goal is provide excellent customer service. We continue to improve on that, from helping the mom and pop to the simple driveway to a $40 million expansion at HEB, all the development stuff that's going on with all the new developments. So we won't spend a whole lot of details on that stuff. Again, we just, main goal is to help them through our permitting process and inspection process. I'm proud we keep everything in-house with city staff as far as plan review, building inspections. We really have built a great relationship across the board with fellow departments and the public in general. Again, within department, you have the Director and Executive Admin, and really, all these are equal across the board. And one thing we're currently, again, I'm proud of, currently, we only have one planner, which is Alondra, who's doing an awesome job. Her and Nicole are working together, which Nicole's over on the right, Development Coordinator. Those two are the key players, along with the two Development Technicians, which is PJ and Melissa at the front window. So we're down one or two planners, we're down one Development Technician, and I kind of joke, I have one Velazquez, who's my only one inspector, so we're looking for staff. Again, Robert kind of works across all departments, helps us with Code Compliance and Animal Control, and again, Nicole's Development Coordinator. Basically, here's just kind of a quick general overview of proposed budgets. You see where we're bad on past years. The main number is, in variance, was 26,000, we're 2021, I guess I'm going to kind of fast forward to 24.
So how did you have the prior years? Because you guys didn't, did you exist as a separate?
And that's the deal, we're still morphing, to be honest with you. We're still morphing. I think we became the Enterprise Fund two years ago, Sylvia?
Special Revenue Fund.
Special Revenue Fund. So these are numbers we pulled from Finance based on actual revenues for those line items. And again, it's just what we just asked, has been under budget for the last two years during the Department of our organization. Again, all reviews and inspections have been brought in-house, brought in one full-on time employee for the Animal Control, Code Compliance, which has been the chipping, he's doing a good job, I mean, working with him. And again, the key word is, I like, is we do code compliance, not enforcement, so we try to work with property owners on compliance. And then Proposed Budgets is basically a quick overview. You see Proposed Adjustments, 103, one, we're basically staying in budget every year because we're pretty consistent, other than raises and, you know, the comp plans, new millers and stuff. Probably the big thing is we're still kind of working through, which I know, the deal on the one item is there's a big number of 179. How do you turn the pointer on again, Sylvia?
Press the top button and hold it down.
So this is the, you see these numbers all kind of line up. The missing number right here that we're still working through, this is 179, 56. This is money that we transfer to other departments, city managers, city secretary of different departments, that comes out of other departments, too, for that support from that department. So again, in the part of the bottom is the revenue. Again, kind of proud of being short-staffed. Can you get the bottom one? Go back, sorry. Which one is it again, Sylvia?
Top one, hold it down.
Okay, sorry. Is our proposed budget is 1.9. And then we're at, right now, we're proposing, again, we have a lot of big projects that still got to hit. We've got five months left between now and September, for five more months in our 12-month budget. Right now, our revenue is 1.41, but we still have all the big projects coming in, like the steak houses in Cinderell and Burson Cross, so I'm hoping that we'll exceed our revenue based on all the commercial development taking place here. Any questions?
Councilperson Meyer.
You have one more slide, Doc, advance one.
Sorry, I got one more. So again, the kind of increases, increase in health insurance, we combine customer service. So the department is divided out in three bud, three different departments within the budget, but this year, we're combining customer service and planning, and same thing for building. So now it's planning and building. Development Service Department goes, apologize, drive of living, again, extra customer service. I'm getting kind of proud with keeping stuff in-house. So far, we've done a good job on meeting deadlines, and part of, again, we've entered, you know, adopted the short-term ordinance, we've done a pretty good job on working on that with that new requirement. Feel we're doing a pretty good job on accurate reporting. Balanced economic growth with quality of life issues, again, that's working with the developers and doing the right things and meeting codes, and then again, with Code Compliance and Animal Control, again, Robert's really engaged with public engagement. And again, protect property rights, enhance property values. Again, the big thing we really want is public engagement with the public. Now, sorry, now questions.
So actually, really, it's kind of not a question, Doc, but it's a thank you. Because that really pretty picture that we saw earlier, that Ever Home Suites, that really was a product, right, of improved development services and improved permitting process to get them to come here. So that was under the city, under y'all. So I just want to give you the gold stars is what it is.
Was the staff.
Okay, and the great staff, absolutely, yes.
So I want to comment, this was a frequent discussion point with people at their front doors while campaigning, and that is that before you got here, and before Sylvia, there was, was it like 700 permits just sitting in a stuck state? People that wanted to build a home would take two years to get a permit, a small, you know, awning on a backyard was six months, you know, something like a water heater was just impossible, which is crazy, because you kind of need that today. And what I always tell people, you know, this isn't something that I'm running on in terms of if you reelect me, I'll fix this because it's already fixed. And so I just want to say thank you.
Well, thank you. And again, I want to stress, we're evolving, we're a growing department, we're star staff, so our goal is every day to continue to be a better department.
You always assess where you are and how you can improve, but the distance that we've come in the last two years is the difference between being abusive to our residents to, you know, collaborating and working with them to help make sure everyone's successful in what they're trying to do. It's just a fundamental difference, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Pro Tem, and for your information, a water heater permit now is an over-the-counter permit. They don't even need to deal with us. They pay their fee, we get an inspection. Commercial reviews, less than 30 days residential reviews also. And it truly is James and almost everybody that's there. And when he tells you that line item is blank, it's because there's so many supportive departments that come in, and I think that more than anything was missing. We all needed to be at the table talking, and even more than talking, we needed to understand what was going on. So the techs have learned basic coloring skills, how to read a plat through coloring, through matte pencils. That's an exercise I take every single city I've ever been in. And we even actually learned finance. Why people get so freaked out, because they've borrowed money, they've, you know, invested their life savings to start a business. So I really applaud James's, not just his contractor hat that he wears, because that brings a whole different level of understanding, actually knowing what you're reading in a plan set, and actually being able to go out and see it come to fruition, are skills that are dwindling these days. So yeah, James is doing a great job, James and the staff, and always short-staffed, because that's how Development Services Departments across the country, not just Bastrop, consistently. That department is a pressure cooker. That is where you create diamonds. Some of the best staff come out of that department.
And if I can, one of the quick comments, important, we're kind of the funnel in for developers and the funnel out for staff, so it's very important. We're only as good as our weakest department, so Water and Sewer, Jim and Curtis with BPL, all their staff, the working relationships we do with Blue Bond and other organizations. So it's a team effort, not just within our departments, across all the other departments.
Councilperson Fosser.
Thanks, I have some fun questions.
Questions.
Well, the fun question is, you know, every division uses its time to tell us their dream list, too, for next budget. So what's your dream list? Like, to be fully staffed, or you got?
Continue to grow professionally as a staff. I mean, good staff, again, you can train people, it's the personalities, one is very dedicated. I mean, all of our staff are very, very dedicated to providing customer service. So the key is get staff with customer service-oriented employees and quality, especially the field of inspection, and the struggle we have in Bastrop, to be an inspector, you really almost have to live here, and that's a whole, as Sylvia just touched on, that's a whole special pool. And you have to be a state licensed plumbing inspector, you know, nobody's growing up in construction anymore, these, you know, and really a missing link, and really out to the public comment, young people are going to A&amp;M or from somewhere for a construction degree. They don't realize how good a career is, as Sylvia says, a pressure cooker, but this is a good, really a good career to be in.
Okay, thank you. I have some specifics, too, also.
Okay.
But I'm looking at the packet, and that's not on your presentation. Do you have the packet in front of you, or do you have it in front of you, Sylvia?
No, I don't. Yes.
Okay. So page sixty-one, uh, under the planning division, at the bottom, I'm just curious about professional services, because like, last year, twenty-three, twenty-four, it was, uh, like fifty-eight thousand. Wait, wait, wait. Let's see. Professional services and planning. Oh, it's zero, it's zero. The budget is, for, for this year has been zero. But last year, there was like a, a spend of like a hundred and seventy thousand. So I was just curious about how that happened.
So remember last year, we had the transportation impact, we also had comprehensive plan, there was quite a bit. We're wrapping up the comprehensive plan, don't know what our professional service is going to look like, because we don't know what, we don't know what we're going to do when we complete the comp plan. We are going to need, I know we're going to need master plan updates, but those may fall within the respective departments. Water wastewater more than likely will end up handling its own trans, um, water wastewater master plan, and then streets will end up having the transportation, uh, master plan. And unless, um, my goal for this department is we move on from a comprehensive plan and we begin moving to area development plans, sort of a shrinking microcosm of what's appropriate in each one of the areas of town.
Oh, yes, I want that too.
That's how we are, well, because that's how we have to
Yeah.
plan for water and wastewater, as it relates to pressure zones, et cetera, et cetera. So instead of trying to have a square widget here and a round widget here, we're trying to carve it out so that we're all, again, looking at the same thing and advancing towards. So you may see that
Okay.
changed.
My other question, just that line right above it is utilities. Like, what, what kind of utilities are in planning that would go from like four thousand one year to like ninety-three thousand? Like, how does that?
That's a good question for utilities. That may be an extra zero, but Development Services is a special revenue fund. They pay for their portion of the overhead in City Hall, just like BEDC does.
Oh, so that's like a rent or utilities that they're paying?
It shouldn't be ninety-three thousand, because that's not even what we charge BEDC.
Okay, have a look at that.
Yeah.
And then I wanted to ask one more. And, and it's probably a similar answer, the division under building inspection on the following page, the professional services. It's like last year, we budgeted fifty, this year, we budgeted seventy-three, but we're only at twenty. And professional services for that one too?
That may be in the wrong division, because building inspections doesn't have professional services. That's all going to be in planning. What building should have is a greater segment in training. So we'll look at those numbers.
Okay, cool. But thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Councilperson Blunkett.
Doc, you don't have, you just thought.
I apologize, it's been a long day, a full week already.
No, I just wanted to, to mention, um, I, I'm sitting in this seat because of your department. And I was extremely frustrated with the, and embarrassed, honestly, with the service that, that I got and that I heard plenty of other citizens got, whatever, uh, you know, from the previous regime. And you've completely flipped it on its head, between you and Sylvia, and, and the two Curtis's did a great job ahead of time, you know, beforehand. I never heard anybody complain about those two guys, but your department got plenty.
Right.
And I just wanted to thank you, because I know turning around a boat like this is not something you do overnight.
Well, and again, closing, if you're okay, is again, we couldn't do it without the support of council and our city manager.
Doc and I cry frequently together.
We give each other that little.
And if you think I'm kidding, I swear on my children. And, and that's, nobody's been in the development field as long as he and I and me in much larger cities. And it's a, it's a problem that plagues every single city. It's just an order of magnitude problem, because it is very complex. If you think of the number of if-then statements that you have to work in your own leg, like if this happens, then that happens. There is never one rulebook that can give you as many if-then statements. And why? Because you guys, I always tell every developer, there's always a way through a regulation, never around. That's a body, that's an appeal, that's councils, any board of adjustment, planning commission, whatever it is. And every single one of you has a different if-then that you want to see that development happen. So when I tell you that we sit and we cry because, number one, the code is still very difficult to get through, number two, the desires of Bastrop as a city and as a growing, more adolescent, uh, growing into its own, and an identity crisis that we're having, in my opinion, trying to keep good staff and then competition with surrounding cities, at, at this level of staff, some of our staff will leave for two dollars more down the street at Elgin. And then, I mean, that happens in police, that happens in fire, it happens throughout. And so when we come into public meetings and the criticisms are hard and harsh, trust me when I tell you, there's not one staff member who's going to die on any one of those hills. All we want to do is continue to advance the city in the best way possible. And when I tell you it's a pressure cooker, you guys sometimes add to that pressure cooker. It creates wonderful, resilient staff, but I'm not joking when I say Doc and I sit in my office and cry at times, after a severe butt kicking at any one of the, any one of the council meetings. But we both love what we do. I don't think Doc would know what to do with himself if he wasn't a building official director.
Yeah, Doc, I just wanted to say, uh, we went through some personal deals with permitting, and from what I've heard on the street, it's, it's, it's improved tremendously. And also, we had a conversation that you would like to have people reach out to you more. And I'm just encouraging that, you know, and you're doing a great job, and, and a lot of departments don't do that. So, um, I'm encouraging everybody that's listening, if you have an issue with development, call Doc. He's, he's, he's ready and willing to talk to you. So that's a, a definitely a different thing that, that I've seen before, so.
And again, I'll stress that personal touch, the ladies up front. I mean, almost all cities, you don't come see me, everything's online, they were closed on Fridays. If, you know, if our doors are locked, knock on the window, we'll let you in.
Clear that way, Doc, clear that way.
There was, there was no paper application. You had to sit in front of a computer. And one of the questions I asked when I got here was, what happens to Mr. Smith, let's just say, who's seventy and, and functionally illiterate as it relates to a computer, what happens then? And I got this. And then I asked, what about Ms. Garcia, who doesn't speak English, who Hispanics make up forty-two percent of our population? We don't even have an application in Spanish, much less on paper, what happens to her? And I got. And coming into that department, where I had a planning director and a building official sitting across from each other, yelling at each other, and staff would close their door to not hear the battles happening, that's what I inherited. Promise. So we've, we've, we've moved some mountains, and the mountain is still bigger to climb, it's up in the fog. We know we've got a longer way to go, but I think we're, Doc's customer service touch, the ladies know almost everybody by name. Sometimes they dive way too deep, but it's all good, you know? It's a learning experience for everybody. And PJ, I love you to death, and I'm specifically calling you out, but I love PJ. She used to work in real estate, so she, you know, she's bringing all of that personal touch. So thank you. Thank you, Doc. Thank you again.
Just let me say one thing on PJ, since you brought her up, Sylvia. Last year, when I went into the planning department, just to give them something, they're always having a run, they're so, everybody here is so sweet, because they run hard copies for me, because, you know, I'm a dinosaur, and I want my hard copies to mark up. But I went in and PJ is babysitting, because the person was asking the question, need, and the kid was crying, and PJ was, here, let me have your kid. And she was babysitting and walking around. So she does everything. So thank you, PJ.
Thanks again.
Okay. Item thirteen B, receive an item, an update on OpenGov.
No, you got finance.
I have finance?
Yes. Even on the street, you'd like to skip it.
Okay, sorry.
No, I don't want to skip it. Okay.
And finance, yes.
Good evening. I'm Judy Sandrucci, day forty, with the city. And I will be presenting a review of the finance department funds. So there are two funds that make up the finance department. That's central finance located here at City Hall. And then we have a utility services located at Spring Street. Um, a, a department overview of central finance. We process all the accounts payable for the city, procurement, payroll processing for all city employees, grants management, Fairview Cemetery, cash and debt management, financial reporting, and budget reporting. And then our utility services, they provide excellent customer service. I had to say that because of our supervisor, Christina Davis, that's a shout out to her. They do provide excellent customer service. And often, they're the first point of contact for new residents. They also manage the billing and payment process for water, sewer, garbage collection, and electricity. They also do the good neighbor fund administration, and water conservation and education. Okay, so our org chart, starting off with the finance director and assistant finance director, and then we have central finance with our finance coordinator, and then our AP person is a senior finance specialist. Then we have a finance specialist too, which is our payroll person, and then a CIP financial analyst. And then on the utility services side, we have our customer service supervisor, our lead customer service specialist, and then we have two customer service specialists. And then I put together this little snapshot of our five-year actuals, of budgeted and actuals. And so you're seeing your, the total FTEs per fiscal year, and then what was budgeted and the actuals for central finance and the utility services, and then the total. And then I did a little summary here of items to mention on those five-year actuals. Central finance has been under budgeted for the past five years. And utility services, they did have a little hiccup there fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty-four. It was due to the sanitation contract. But they put out an RFP, and now we have a new vendor. And as you can see, um, if I go back, no, I went forward. Oh, I keep going forward, here we go. Uh, headcount has remained low for the finance department. And then we have what we're proposing for fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget. For central finance, the ask is seventy-six thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars. And then for utility services, sixty-seven thousand five twenty-one, for a total of one forty-four zero seventy-seven. We do have some software expenses that are offsetting these increases. And there's explanations per each line item, but the next, the next slide shows a summary. And so for central finance, the increase is due to step increases and twelve percent increase in health insurance. And we are asking for one FTE, an accountant. And so the additional expenses include the salary, the benefits, the supplies, and the training and travel that go with that position. And then our utilities are going up as well. And then utility services, the increase is due to step increases and twelve percent increase in the health insurance, supplies and postage, since they're located at Spring Street now, and the sanitation contract. Also, they now have an office lease, and the data pros, the bill printing contract and credit card fees have increased. So our strategic priorities and goals is always to deliver excellent customer service to our internal and external customers. And then we're always trying to meet our deadlines, accounts payable, procurement, payroll, grant reporting, cash and debt management, utilities, financial reporting, budget reporting, et cetera. We always have these deadlines that we need to meet, and we strive to meet. And of course, accurate reporting. Everyone depends on the numbers, so we want to make sure that we have the right numbers to present to y'all and to wherever we're, you know, presenting. And any questions?
Councilperson Blunkett.
Yeah, I just had one. I understand you've been working on an audit, and just wanted to get an update on that.
Yes, we are working on an audit. We're projecting by the end of June, it should be completed, give or take a week or two, either before or after. So it's going well, actually. Thank you.
Councilperson Foster.
I noticed, uh, one of your amendments are, are increases was due to the sanitation contract going up. I think, was it supposed to be like four percent every year, up to four percent? Do you remember? Is that about what it is?
Yeah, they're going, they're, they're.
Is it going, what we agreed to?
Yes, but we're, we're, we're going to try to go back and negotiate some of that.
Okay. I was just wondering if it was out of range of what?
No, it will not be.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
And the twelve percent that they keep referring to, that's what our preliminary Blue Cross Blue Shield discussion has come back at. There's a couple of options in health insurance. We have some employees who are young and very healthy who may want to get off a more Cadillac plan, so to speak, although none of our plans are Cadillac anymore. And so depending on how we divvy the resources among the health insurance pools, that may come down a little bit. So it's just an estimate right now. Mm-hmm. Thank you. I will say, um,
We'll talk about this one next.
Okay, then let's move on to the next item. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thirteen B, review, receive an update on OpenGov.
So this is the financial transparency that we've been talking about for quite a bit. This is, I know that you guys used to have a city manager's report, and it was on the website. And if, if you could pull any one of the staff members who contributed to that report, and, and where the data actually came from, you would understand why I say that I don't know that it's worthy of air. OpenGov, however, is running in the background, and it is reading off of our financial software immediately. We don't have any time to modify it, we don't have any time to create an, a adjustment. These things are real live, out there, anybody in the public can drill down. As we work through our budget, these are our goals, and I'm going to show you some examples of OpenGov. As we work through the budget, a steady tax rate. Nobody wants a tax rate increase, depending on how much value has been put on the ground, a hopeful reduction in the tax rate. We're going to go back and look at impact fees. We skipped water this last time, we're going to come back and review some of the water. We're going to go through capital project review. Again, that's contingent on the comprehensive plan and where we're growing and what we need to invest in certain areas. And minimal to no impact any of the fees to the residents. This is a hard inflation time. We're trying not to have to pass any of that on. And so OpenGov, I know those are tiny, these are what we call tiles. Every one of these is a division or a department that is being worked on. When these go live, you will be able to click on the sheet. It will tell you expenses, revenues. You'll be able to click on the month. You'll be able to filter just supplies. You'll be able to filter whether it was trips and travel, any of the information that is important to anybody who wants to know what we're doing with the city's money, the residents' money, because that's what it is. It also has a workforce component. This particular component, and I know it's very small to read, so when we talk about, this is a project manager. So when we talk about a project manager, and we talk about base salary of eighty-six thousand dollars, there's way more than goes into a workforce of eighty-six thousand. This is the loaded rate. And so that, that amount is actually a hundred and, can I see it myself?
One ten.
It is actually one ten, right?
Yes.
Um, and so when we're, when we're budget planning, and everybody's asking for their, you know, for their wish list of additional people, this is feeding into that, and we will create the budget out of this. As we move through the budget process, they've already submitted proposals to me. I've already said, nobody's getting anything. We got to see where we land first. We've received preliminary, preliminary, preliminary appraisals. It looks positive, but I know that we're facing a twelve percent increase in health insurance. It looks positive, but I know that we're facing a 12% increase in health insurance. I know some of those software fees have just annual increases. And then overall, all of the merit and step increases that are within, built within the budget. So we, we're going to do a base budget and then we'll take it. And so this is going to be a very interactive process, not just for the council, but for the residents to be able to see what we're building, how we're building and what went into it completely. Once it's out, once we put it live, every department will have a story. And that's related to what is happening within that department. Why do those expenses look that way? Why do those revenues look that way? And you yourself, you don't have to take it from me in the story. You yourself as a resident, council member can go in and drill and see the exact number for yourself. No, we're not hiding anything. This is actually a very robust transparency portal. It can get to the point where you can actually see the canceled check. We don't issue a lot of checks these days. We transfer a lot of money via wire, so you might be able to see some of the ACH information. But I'm super excited. Laura and team have been working really hard to get this done, not just doing the OpenGov transition, they're doing the audit and they're doing our consolidated annual financial report, which used to be called a CAFER, now it's an ACFER. I don't know why the accountants like to change their acronyms, but here we are. All of those things are due before we go for the borrow to the bridge. So we're, we're working hard, we're working fast, we're sweating bullets over there knowing that I'm going to cut them. But, you know, well, we always try to do more with less until there's nothing left on that boat. Questions?
So in terms of OpenGov, it's a piece of software, right?
Correct.
And when will it be available for people to use?
End of summer.
Okay.
Midsummer, Laura? Midsummer? Most of it is built out already. We're now running like, you know, spell check and make sure everything made its way in there. We can put some tiles out for public consumption as test trials in the transparency portal.
Yeah, sounds like a good idea. Any other questions, counsel?
You'll be able to track project management expenses here too, so the bridge will have a tile. The parks will have a tile. You'll be able to see what was paid, what's the percentage. So not that the other information didn't have any value, it was just stale as soon as it got printed. With this, you're actually reading, seeing the information as we pay the bills.
It seems like we could do future financial reports.
Yes.
Live from the tool.
Yes, 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 yes.
Yeah. Okay. Well, then let's move on to the consent agenda. And so we have...
Somebody's watching it on Facebook.
Okay, so we have two ordinances and then we start with the meeting minutes. So counsel, does anyone want anything removed from the consent agenda? Okay, so we're going to read items 15A and 15B, the ordinances which we're required to read. In fact, I'll just read them as well. So 15A, consider an act on the first reading of ordinance number 2025-52 authorizing the disbursement of $38,000 for the construction of the Fisherman's Park Walkway Improvement Project to move to include on the May 27th, 2025 Agenda for a Second Reading. 15B, consider an act on the second reading of ordinance number 2025-47 amending the budget for the fiscal year 2025 in accordance with existing statutory requirements appropriating the various amounts herein as attached in Exhibit A. And so those have been read as per our charter in a second meeting. We will also be approving with one vote in the consent agenda, the meeting minutes in 15C, a resolution in 15D and a resolution in 15E. Counsel, is there a motion? Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve from counselperson Plunkett, a second from counselperson Meyer. Also, I'll note that counselperson Foster left the dais. We still have a functional quorum of four, so we'll keep going. Any discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. So the motion passes unanimously with those that are up here with the exception of counselperson Foster, who stepped away. And she's back! Okay, so we are now moving on to items for individual consideration. Let's go ahead and start with 16D, the last one first, since we have two people signed up for citizens comments and apparently a few more.
I'm sorry, 16?
D, the land use.
Okay, the land use, great.
Mr. Bridges, do you wish to speak?
Yeah.
I'm not ready yet. I just, you didn't, you didn't check either of the boxes, so I wanted to, yeah. So I'll mark that for you. Cecilia wished to speak. Heather Green wished to speak. Pablo Serna wished to speak. And Carlos Larian wished to speak. Okay. Got a full house for those. Excellent. So let's do the report on 16D.
Good evening again. I'll try to kind of be quick and then Ida with half will be doing her presentation. So again, we talked about this at P&amp;Z and I realized a little earlier that, on our EDC website, again, beating this for 40 years and working all over this triangle, is what's called the Texas Triangle consisting of 35, 10 and 45. Realize as you look at that map where Bastrop falls in that map, and again, we've got three things that are really going for us, the tourism downtown that we're continuing to grow upon and work together with everybody on. You have the passing traffic through on 71 and then future north and south traffic. And then you have just overall growth that we're experiencing in this particular area with the terrain, the topography, just being a good place to live. Because one thing, the key word as we went through this and always kind of use these tools, is we want to protect and preserve the important stuff. We have developed property and we're really blessed to have a lot of good existing stuff that you're not going to see any major redevelopment taking places. We do have some individual lot redevelopment, which we kind of address the concern of small lots to the lot size. As we speak, we have three different properties in town that we work with that are substandard residential houses that they'll be taken down and building new homes on. So again, working with code compliance. But the redevelopment is kind of lot by lot case, but really no large pieces where you've got a slum area you'll tear down and start over again. You have the undeveloped property where the main focus is trying to really identify all these undeveloped property. And again, kind of et cetera. And then everything we talked about so far tonight, this really ties together. This plan will be used with all the future growth going. A lot of times these plans aren't used because you don't have growth taking place, but with the volume of growth, as Sylvia touched on, this is going to be for infrastructure, water, sewer. We work with the school district on future schools and education. Where do we want to put wrecks and parks and trails, tie all that together? And again, kind of the P is provide. Everybody wants hospital and medical. We've got to plan and address that. Again, all this is part of the comp plan. We talked about we won't need another grocery store. Yes, we're getting one, we'll probably need another one. You need to identify it through your comp plan as EDC and Sylvia works with these developers coming, they see this map. And we work with them on inventory on vacant property. Where's a good place to build this stuff? But you have to have water and sewer and utilities there, so. And besides staff, we work with Bluebonnet again and the school on that. Again, we want restaurants and entertainment, et cetera. Here's our districts of, and then I'm going to let half, Ida, do her presentation.
Ida Capricioso with Half Associates. Thank you so much, everyone, for your participation in this and giving us the opportunity to come and present formally to city council, the work that has been undergone over the last nine months with yourselves, planning and zoning, the city staff and of course the community. So some of you have seen some of this information, but I'm, congratulations to those who've been recently sworn in. So give you a little background here, but as Doc mentioned, we started this process really to help the city address a couple different chapters in the existing comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2016. And those chapters are referenced, the community growth and the land use and community image chapters of the comprehensive plan. As I mentioned, this has been about a nine-month process. We started back in August of 2024. And we started that with some initial collection of information, really refamiliarizing ourselves with Bastrop. And then also beginning to talk to the community a little bit about what their vision for the future is in terms of land growth and community character. And so this slide really just shows sort of that process since August of last year. So why are comprehensive plans important? As Doc mentioned, you know, these plans are really meant to help identify how the community can grow, where the community needs to make investments. It provides an opportunity to look at how we can balance land uses and those services in your community. It also is an opportunity to involve your citizens on what that future vision looks like for the community. And then of course, really identifying the opportunity for some of those growth strategies to reflect those community values that come through that process. So the specific purpose of this update was to really look at that community growth and community image sections to reflect some of the changes that have happened since 2016, to realign the future land use map. The land use map was a bit out of date and really didn't reflect some of the unique identity and character for future growth that the city residents and council and others wanted to see here in the community. Was also an opportunity for us to do kind of a quick assessment of the existing future land use and the code, whether there were some gaps or some opportunities for future improvement. And then also just to support any future growth that is coming to the community to make sure that that's consistent with Bastrop's unique historic charm. And as Doc pointed out, protect, preserve and plan and provide is really sort of the four Ps of comprehensive planning and your future land use map. So through that process, we did have some community inputs and we had really great responses from many of the community, both from the online survey and then from some of the activities that we hosted throughout the, throughout the nine-month planning period. And just to highlight some of the desires and comments that came from the community is that, you know, there is a desire to see more parks and open space. As you see your community develop more, people really want to make sure that they preserve that open space in the community. They really would prefer to see some of that growth continue to happen on the west side of town or west of the river and really protect that east side of town and of course the, the pines area as well. Tree preservation, water source protection was really also a couple of critical items that were mentioned. In the community engagement, when we talk about residential or housing in this context, there's a lot of support to continue to support that rural residential, that there needed to be better services for the new residential that is coming online and that there's still some concern about balancing that diversity and density. And so something to really think about moving forward as you consider developments that come through or code changes or anything like that. As it relates to commercial in downtown, the main comment was really better distribution of some of those retail services. So a lot of that retail right now is happening on 71 and really seeing some of that disperse. And you'll see some of that when we get to the future land use map where we were able to sort of help identify areas that would provide some of that just better distribution. Traffic congestion, always the topic as, you know, communities develop, you know, how to manage that, how to disperse that a little bit more. And then as it relates to professional services or things that are in the downtown area to continue to support that, but also really preserve that downtown component of Bastrop. Really great feedback from the community. So as a result of that feedback and feedback from planning and zoning, there was a revision to the Bastrop growth principle, really just to enhance the component that talks about the natural environment and the small town character. Was not originally in your 2016 growth principle and so really heard that from you and the community and really felt that needed to be integrated in that principle. In addition to that, adding the protection of health, safety and wellbeing for the community was also really important, as well as managing that targeted corridor development to balance that economic opportunity as well as your community character. So from that growth, growth principle, we draw down what we call growth policy themes. And these are just really large buckets of areas we heard lots of comments about and lots of concerns about, which is the land use, the development patterns that are happening, the preservation of that rural character, utilities and infrastructure, those services that are necessary to support all of that development. And of course, the corresponding transportation corridors, how will it continue to support that development? And these ultimately help to shape the goals and objectives and the strategies that were updated through this planning process as well. So these are the revised community growth goals. And really, the intention of the revision or the update for this was really to reaffirm some of the previous goals, which really emphasized a lot of infrastructure investment and wastewater and much of that has remained in this, improvement of stormwater management, wastewater and water services. But we also revise some of these to really target things that are related to resiliency as well as to preservation of your existing neighborhoods and that small town charm and really utilizing context sensitive development, which is really just to make sure that you reflect sort of what the existing neighborhood is before you bring in new development. And then guiding that growth to make sure that it has some accessible and efficient vehicular access to those neighborhoods. For the land use and community image goals, again, it was a question to the community to reaffirm some of the existing goals that were there. And so these were just revised to really reflect a lot of the comments that came from the community in terms of making sure there was an effort to expand park access, to make sure there was enhancement to the community character by utilizing those context sensitive incentives or regulations that would preserve some of that Bastrop unique character. Really to focus on protecting that low-density neighborhoods, really maintaining that rural character. And then of course, promoting a balanced development that's going to reflect the character of the neighborhoods and the community expectation. So we heard that over and over again through the surveys, through our meetings, through open houses and really felt that we needed to, to make sure that those were clearly outlined in the goals. So in order to help us work on the development of the future land use and the future land use map, we needed to look at the existing conditions. And we call this really the foundation for growth. So when we look at the existing conditions, we start with the existing land use. So this is a map that shows the existing land use, how current parcels of land are being utilized in either a retail, commercial, residential or vacant status. We also look at, looking at some of the physical and environmental constraints to that development through, through some of the hazards, as well as the existing zoning that the city has for those particular parcels. Let me see if I can get to the right slide here. Sorry, I went the wrong way. So we look at your zoning in place type map, really, this is what overlays that existing land use map that you saw on the previous slide. And then in addition to that, we look at these constraints, you know, flood constraints, potential hazards related to fire, flood risk. And utilize that to basically inform this growth potential map. And so y'all have seen this map before, but this map really is just to demonstrate that in Bastrop, the development opportunities or the potential for higher growth or more opportunities for growth really do exist west of the river and in some of the areas along the main arterials through, throughout the community. Still some opportunities east of the river, but as you can see there, north going up 95 and in that area over there. Okay. And so as a result of looking at that information and talking to the community, we've developed this future land use map that has seen several renditions. You know, we start with the base map, just hearing from the community, hearing from staff, putting that together and then again, presenting that a couple of times in public sessions in order to make sure we've covered where people would like to see future growth or future land use in Bastrop in the next 10 to 20 years. And so I just want to, I know it's sort of hard to see here, but in the legend, there are essentially one, two, three, four, five, six, seven categories, maybe eight categories here. So just to highlight really quickly, so your commercial corridor, which is sort of the development, commercial development that you see along 71, really remains along 71. It's really heavy areas that really focus on auto-centric, commercial, retail. Sort of weaved in and out of there is this orange area, which is considered mixed density, which is primarily residential. And then this blue, these blue areas are what we have called mixed use corridor, which would allow for mixed use development along some of these corridor areas in, in Bastrop. And then just to point out, the downtown area has a little bit, can I zoom in on this? How do I zoom in on it? How do I zoom in on it? Okay, yeah, just wanted to, yeah, so that's a little easier to see. So in the downtown area, you'll see that that area is primarily identified as residential with sort of this hashed area as commercial. And then the darker yellow and the lighter yellow are primarily residential, with the darker yellow being single-family only, and then rural estate conservation for this lighter area. And then, of course, the green is primarily parks and open space areas as well. One other future land use category that was identified is neighborhood commercial, which is primarily just small pockets of commercial development in mixed-density residential areas. So you'll see them, just a few pockets of them in this area, and then if you can zoom out, I think there's probably one more run up here. So just to support some of the, you know, possible day-to-day services that the community in those areas would need as well. So that is a general overview of what we've been working on for the last months. Congratulations on working through that process. It's been, it's been very fun to learn and hear and see all the different things that you all are very passionate about and are interested to preserve. And so I think it's, I think y'all have done a really good job of really expressing what needs to be updated and reflected. Are there any questions?
So council, we have, we need to have a public hearing after we do questions. So Councilperson Meyer, you have your light on, so I'll recognize you. And then if anyone else has any questions, let's ask those, and then we'll do the public hearing.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate from the joint P&amp;Z meeting, the council had the input, and there's still only two little things, and this isn't a big deal, and we can, if we decide, we can make these corrections in time for our second reading. So there's, this is not to delay. We have done this, and I appreciate all the effort, especially Doc. You became Mr. Bastrop because you are everywhere with your comp plan map, so thank you for that. Concern number one, the area behind, oh, question?
Yeah, questions?
Yes, I was going to ask, why the change?
Okay.
Concern, question number one. The area behind, and you're probably going to know exactly where this is when I say this, on Buc-E's going up to Lost Pines Avenue toward Mayfest Park. Previously, the previous land use was rural, and now we have it as neighborhood residential. So why did, question is, why did we not continue to make that under the category of residential conservation estate?
The simple answer is, I think I thought you all said neighborhood residential and not neighborhood or not real, rural estate. So that, if that is a need to change, that is certainly a change that can be made very easily.
Thank you.
To go to that, the lightest yellow.
Thank you so much. Second question, the purple area that is now categorized as downtown previously was neighborhood, which was residential, neighborhood residential, which was single-family, low-density. And we talked about, I don't know how we would do that, but how would we, and I like that, I like the downtown, they need that protection. How would we also give them more protection to include neighborhood residential, to protect them from mixed-use, commercial, walkable commercial? How could we do that to include that also?
Well, in that purple, you still have residential.
Right.
And so, you know, that is going to be code-based in terms of how you decide on a case-by-case basis for, for those areas. So your next step may be to consider an overlay for a particular area. But this, my understanding for the downtown is that you would still want to be able to have some commercial that still, like, exists in those residential neighborhoods. And so rather than using that neighborhood commercial block that, that supports some of those residential, we created just a downtown that includes both residential and commercial. But in the description for the downtown residential, it does state that it needs to reflect the community character of that area.
Right.
So.
And I appreciate that, and I understand. However, since this is going to dictate the future and when we're not even going to be here, it's really important we do this. And the area of the downtown did increase because we went farther north, so people understand that as a north end. And I would like to find a way to have more protection from mixed-use development and walkable-friendly commercial, which I guess walkable is kind of subjective on how far you want to wa, I understand what you're saying, but I would like, if we could, could, would we be able to include a little more protection for that also?
So Councilmember Meyer, are you contemplating that the purple go to yellow with some pockets of pink where neighborhood commercial is appropriate, like where Tracy's is?
Yes, that's exactly, yes, yes Sylvia, that's exactly what I'm asking. Thank you.
Okay, we'll get with staff to revise that for those streets, areas.
Counsel, any more questions? Okay, oh, Councilperson Falsor?
I have questions from downtown property owners that are asking if there are additional restrictions coming in or additional guidelines going away, just because it's all purple, it's a little like, for downtown commercial property owners, this doesn't change any, this doesn't change anything for them, right?
No, no, and even, so when the city went through the B3 and they did the full-on zoning for the entire city, there's a lot of grandfathered stuff out there. Any change that we would do for a zoning change would require absolute notification. We, I mean, there's like 9,000 steps to follow in order to do that.
Yeah, not for zoning, but for just?
Well, zones, uses are included in zoning, so nothing is going away as it relates to what's there right now.
What's currently there right now.
Nothing is going away with that. Now, changing this map to yellow with pockets of pink will dictate future development. So we haven't changed the uses yet, we haven't changed the uses yet, this is just a guide on how we want things to develop in a certain area. So I'll give you an example. Right now where Farmer Dave is, if Farmer Dave sells tomorrow, he has the ability to put residential there, whatever, you know, a third of an acre residential there on his property. If he wanted to go through a change of zoning, that would create a, another mini little center that has a hair-cutting place, that has a little grocery store, it has the things that support the neighborhood, that may be a pocket of pink. And that's what Councilmember Myers is talking about, is yes, we want it to remain residential, but we know inherently there are mixed uses in there that are meant to support a neighborhood.
Right, but like, this doesn't affect like the current, so there's like maybe two or three P4 stuff north of, and now I'm getting into my own neighborhood, but that's not where my question came from. But if we change north of the tracks to yellow with pockets of neighborhood commercial, which is what we love, none of, none of the current P4s go away, they just get translated?
No, none of the current P4s go away, nothing, so I don't want to scare people, none of the current zoning goes away. What this tells us is in the future, if somebody wants to change to a P4, we're going to go, yeah, that's not what the future land use map is dictating.
Gotcha.
And why? Because as we begin to plan our capital expenses, our improvements, that's what's dictating. So nobody's losing their zoning.
Okay, and the same for the downtown. Okay, okay, got it, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, opening the public hearing, Mr. Stewart Bridges. And open the public hearing at 8:43 PM.
Good evening.
Same in address.
My name's Stewart Bridges, live on 12 Lost Pines Avenue. Don't have much to say other than I would like to latch on to Mrs. Myers, Councilwoman Myers, comments that, I think I speak for all of my neighbors, with the exception of possibly one, that we would like for you to consider keeping the neighborhood that you spoke about above Buc-E's earlier as a P2 conservative, conservation, right? Conservation, yeah. And I appreciate all the hard work everybody's done on this map. I realize our little neighborhood up there is a very small piece of the puzzle, but I'd just like to speak on behalf of my neighbors, saying that we support your P2 conservative, conservation. Okay, thank you.
Shannon Day.
Hi, my name's Shannon Day, I'm at 13 Lost Pines Avenue. I'm going to keep this short and sweet, I want to just add on to what Councilmember Myers said about keeping the area behind the Buc-E's, P2 rural, or I think it's called neighborhood conservation in the current map. I wanted to say thank you for all of the extra sessions that have happened and so much work that's been going into this, it's, it's really awesome to see. And congratulations to Mr. Kirkland and Ms. Low. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, thank you Shannon. Ian Riker Watts.
Hello, first time up here. Hi, I'm Ian Riker Watts.
You can move that microphone up. No, you can move the microphone up. There you go.
Me and Riker Watts live at 13 Lost Pines Avenue, and I'd just like to echo the sentiment of two neighbors and Cynthia, Councilwoman Myers, about keeping the area behind the Buc-E's around the P2 area. I think it just makes more sense, the language in the new packet kind of described the conservation area to be, you know, areas with environmental considerations. I think that pretty much sums up that hill perfectly in that area around there, right? You know, it's a beautiful forest. I think one acre minimum is plenty, you know? I'm opposing restrictions on my own property too, right? So I want that, I want to preserve that forest behind there for everybody who are right next to the state park. Consider us that transition into, you know, pure nature, right? So anyway, thank you very much, and congratulations, Mr. Low and Mr. John Kirk again, and thank you for your time.
Madam City Manager, do you, I'm looking for the zoning map, how is that property that the neighbors have talked about, how is it zoned today? Not future land use map, but actual zoning?
Let me check.
So then by setting the future land use map to the lighter yellow color, if we were to do that, it's not going to create a conflict with the current zone?
No, it actually corresponds with the place type. I mean, there's a, there's a difficulty with descriptors actually matching, they're not always going to particularly match, in this case, residential estate matches what the original Lost Pines, I think is, yeah.
Yeah, nowhere in my head was, was if it was already zoned, which is legal, you can use it for that purpose, zoned as P3, single-family residential, you know, third of an acre lot, so we couldn't take that away. And so, but that's not the case, it is P2 right now, and so by setting the future land use map, that's at least an option we would have when we get to that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Pablo Serna.
There is a small area of P5, but that's what's along.
Yeah.
Highway 71 frontage.
All right, good evening, and I think a lot of people already covered it, Pablo Serna, 1104 Hill Street. And I do want to say thank you to you guys for bringing Half back on to work with us and allow the community to have some input. I do think it's very important that we get the FLUM right, the future land use map, and get those in alignment. I know it was one of the recommendations that I read in there that we really want to get those aligned. I think a lot of, some of the issues that we've seen publicly was when they were not aligned. Okay, so the area behind Buc-E's, as has already been covered, I do see where, I know it's not something that can happen immediately, but if we're showing it upzoned a little bit more, we could get more density there, and the recommendations that would come along with that would not align with going back to a P2 rural, so I think we've covered that. So I recommend that a motion be added to keep it, that area as residential conservation estate. On page 184, on the update to the comprehensive plan, it lists appropriate land uses for residential conservation estate, and under industrial, it has a section there that has limited appropriateness, and it says it may exist adjacent to open spaces with strict buffering requirements to minimize noise, visual, and environmental impacts. So I get that, you know, those are agricultural-type properties and light industrial and ag-type spaces, but I think we're covering that with commercial. So I don't know if, on P3, excuse me, on the residential neighborhood, it has, recommends not having industrial or not any commercial for those, so we're really clear there, but on this one, it looks like, from my reading, it could be allowed. So maybe we have to be careful with that. So I would say that, you know, we have these overlays and we need to identify certain areas. I think everybody's really gravitating to the fact that how close it is to the state park, and if we could identify that area, maybe that road, Highway 21, I've driven it, I remember when I was a kid and I drove up here for the first time, and I went up Highway 21, and I was from Corpus Christi, so we didn't have the kind of trees that were here, and I was just blown away by the pine trees. And that road went up and down, and this was before the fire, so the trees were on both sides and down the middle. Designating that as a scenic corridor, I think, would help, help with regulation, particularly with outdoor signage and lighting pollution, and also would impact what we could do from a commercial and industrial standpoint. So again, I recommend a motion at some point, maybe that's not now, but at some point down the road, the council look at establishing scenic corridors, and you can think of some other ones, maybe 304 or parts of 969 that are going to rapidly change as Bastrop grows quickly. So I would, I would say, recommend we get some scenic corridors established. And then, last couple of things, just, I know it was in there, it was pointed at, but we really need to get the wildland urban interface code aspect added to ours. I know Austin has done that, and I know it adds a little bit to the development in all the communities that are being developed right up against the forest, but we don't have to adopt all parts of it, we can certainly adopt certain parts of it, but that would help with those properties that are right into the forest and could be, contribute to flammability. And also, would like to see the city expand the historic district from the main street all the way out to the other neighborhoods where most of the houses, there's at least 32 that have markers where they're located. If we don't try to watch those, the new development coming into that area, it could be mismatched, you know, newer development by an older home that's not so significant next to a more significant home, and you can see some rapid change happening there if we don't try to do something there. And then the last thing I'll say is about the form-based code, I know we're, we're going back to land uses, and that form-based code really is focused in on existing stock, existing houses, so matching that up with that historic district, I think, would be a smart thing to do. That's all I got.
Thank you, Ms. Serna. Cecilia Serna.
Cecilia Serna, 1104 Hill Street, he stole my thunder. Yeah, he copied it from me. Okay, it's the same thing. Cynthia, thank you very much for proposing that we keep the hill behind Buc-E's as conservation. Couple of questions that I found, and I'm into the details. On residential conservation, it has commercial, residential, and industrial listed, but on the next level, on neighborhood residential, it says commercial and industrial not appropriate. So I was wondering if maybe those were flip-flopped, because the more rural area, I would think you don't want commercial or industrial. So if you look at the descriptions between the light yellow, darker yellow, they seem to be flip-flopped. And it's important, because as stated, that the FLUM, the way we're going to vote in to existence, that the B3 codes, we're going to have to align with that, so it's good to get this straight now. So it's good to get this straight now. And then I had a question on densities and intensity. It's a single-family minimum lot size are a third of an acre, and I think this was this under neighborhood residential. The typical densities range from four to six units per acre, exclusive of ADUs. So it's making me think that if you have six units, you could have 18 units in that total if you add ADUs. So in addition to minimum lot size, you probably need to look at capping the number of units per acre. That way, you know, yes, some houses aren't going to get to have an ADU, but, you know, then you just move and try to find a house somewhere else. That's just the way the market is. You're not going to have everything. You can't make everything equal for everybody in fill. So I was just wondering if that math is right? And if we're trying to keep density manageable, we don't want to have, I think 11 per acre is like a lot, if you look at Pecan Grove or Riverside. Pecan Grove, you figure out how many houses are in that acre. It's, I believe, 11. I don't, I have this nice little table I did a couple months ago, but anyway, so that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Carlos Liriano.
Good evening, council. Thank you.
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Carlos Liriano, 1208 Church Street. I also own Lost Pines Toyota. And I am also one that is looking to make a bigger investment in the Bastrop area. So I, I'm not just looking at Bastrop for today, but the future. I recently had an opportunity to go to Austin and attend a meeting of the Austin Business Journal. And at that meeting, they introduced us to the developments that are going to happen on the east side of Austin. Development is going to be big. We are in a developing area. Development is coming to Bastrop. So when I take a look at this map, a couple of things comes to mind. One is that the downtown area is the heart of our community. I also see a limited amount of space, a limited amount of land space. So I really appreciate the staff and the city taking the time to create this map, create this drawing and visualizing what we want Bastrop to come to fruition. However, if we take this plan and shelve it and put it away, then folks are going to come and ask for changes that may not be the best use for a piece of land. So tonight, I would really like to encourage you to keep this alive. Refer to this often. Our community doesn't just need housing. We need recreation. We need a medical facility. We need all sorts of different things in the future. Without proper planning and a vision for the future, it's just, we're going to miss out on this great opportunity that we have. So tonight, I encourage you to please keep this alive and use it and think about what really Bastrop can become in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Ms. Heather Green.
Heather Green, 2007 Pecan Street. Just want to start by congratulating you guys. It has been breathtaking to sit through these meetings. As you have seen, I have, I came in February, very angry, to a planning and zoning meeting and have since kept returning and have loved to see the change that has happened and the growth. I'm going to piggyback a little bit on Carlos and just say, he is correct. We do not get more city of Bastrop. We do not get to acquire more land for city of Bastrop, which is why we need to move forward with the future land use map to ensure that we grow responsibly. I know that there may be a couple of people who are a little afraid of what it looks like. This is not the finality of it all. There is checkpoint after checkpoint. There is the zoning, and you have to, everything has to match up. And at the end of the day, we rely on you guys to also have our backs and ensure that what our city grows into is something that respects the people that are currently here. I do want to follow up with Cynthia's suggestion. I know that she mentioned changing downtown to include the light yellow with pockets of pink. Would it potentially be easier to do an overlay that kind of protects the residential portions? I mean, I know that realistically, we want those traces that have been there for forever. We want the farm stand. We want Brenda Abbott. We want those type of places, but we also want to make sure that we don't stick 42 homes in people's backyards. So just making sure that we do that responsibly. But I love the direction that we are going. I love sitting through this meeting today and how positive everything has been. I really appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Okay, so that was the last one I had signed up. Anybody else? Okay. Closing the public hearing at nine o'clock. So council, at this point, we need a motion. No? Not without a motion.
I make a motion to approve with conditions. And the conditions would be to put the property behind, well, to keep the property behind Buc-Ee's, Lost Pines Avenue, as rule, which would be considered residential conservation estate. And also, another condition would be to have the downtown, the purple area, go back to neighborhood residential with pockets of the purple for pedestrian-friendly commercial. Sylvia, did I say that right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion from Councilperson Meyer, a second from Councilperson Low. This is a conditional approval with the conditions being that the Buc-Ee's hill is tagged as the light yellow rural color and that downtown go back to neighborhood residential with the purple pockets in it. So now we can talk about it, and if we want to change any of those things, we can do that. So Councilperson Foster, what would you like to say?
I thought the pockets of purple were intended to be the pockets of pink, the neighborhood commercial.
No, the purple, the purple to go to residential, single-family residential with, we need to bring back what the pockets of pink are going to be. Where are those appropriate?
Right, not pockets of purple. Okay.
Well, pockets of pink. It's in the, in the map, it's, neighborhood commercial is pink.
Okay. I also, when we finish this motion, I would like for it to not go on the next consent agenda, since we're going to be making changes to it, so it can go on individual consideration again. So I'll ask for that part in a friendly amendment. I think that's it. Let's see. Yeah. That's all I got.
So then, would you like to request your two friendly amendments?
My friendly amendments are in the changing of downtown, the purple, to neighborhood residential and adding pockets of neighborhood commercial. And also moving to, when we approve this, to put it on the individual consideration for May 27th instead of consent.
Question. If it's on the consent agenda, you always have the authority to pull it. So I don't know why it would make a difference. It'd be six of one, half a dozen another.
That's fine. I will pull it. I just think it needs as much airtime as possible. Just like with all the code changes, I requested every single code thing to be on the, to be, not go to consent, but to just get as much airtime as possible on individual.
So there is a, let's kind of break those up. So we've got a friendly amendment request. I think we're basically saying the, instead of pockets of purple, make them pink, which is the neighborhood commercial.
It's kind of orange. Can we just say neighborhood commercial?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because we're dealing with, you know, is anyone colorblind here, you know? So instead of then calling it pockets of purple, we're going to call it neighborhood commercial. So are you okay with that specific thing?
I am fine with the yellow neighborhood residential with pockets of neighborhood commercial being salmon color.
Mandarin orange. No. So Councilperson Low, are you okay with that friendly amendment?
I am okay with that.
Okay, so we have now adopted that friendly amendment. So now we have the item on individual consideration. Do you accept the, putting it on individual consideration?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and you?
I do as well.
Okay, so we have both of those friendly amendments in our motion. Is there any other discussion, council? Okay, then. So it's time to vote. We have a motion on the table from Councilperson Meyer, a second from Councilperson Low. That motion is a conditional approval with conditions being that the hill behind Buc-Ee's is at the lightest yellow color at the rural, the downtown go back to neighborhood residential with pockets for neighborhood commercial where they are existing, and then that it should go on the individual consideration list at the next meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council. Thank you, everybody in the public. Thank you. Oh, whoa, whoa, what is this? Kevin just said, this is a business meeting. Love it. Okay, now back to 16A. Conduct a public hearing. Consider and act on the first reading of ordinance number 2025-49, annex any attractive land described as 23.298 plus or minus acres out of land out of the Nancy Blakely survey, abstract number A98, located west of Farm to Market Road 969, known as Valverde, Section 2, Phase 4, as shown in Exhibit A, and move to include on the May 27, 2025, agenda for second reading. Madam Andreas.
Good evening, Mayor Pretend and council. So before you tonight, we have an annexation request from the Valverde development. They are requesting to voluntarily annex into the city limits. Previously, they did do an annexation in 2023 for approximately 399.878 acres. They do have an approved development agreement and PID on the property or on the project. In 2023, when they annexed, it was for approximately 352 units in that particular section. As you all know, just a little backstory, we had to go through the CCN transfer with Aqua regarding the right to service utilities, water utilities. And so they had actually submitted this annexation for Section 2, Phase 4 quite a while ago. We just weren't able to move forward with it because part of the annexation process requires a municipal service plan. In that municipal service plan, you identify utility providers. Well, we couldn't in full face say that we would be the utility provider until we settled the issue with Aqua. Since that has since been settled with Aqua, and we are the rightful provider for the CCN, for the water CCN, we are now moving forward with the annexation request from Valverde. And so at this time, they're looking to annex approximately 23.298 acres. That's approximately 94 units total. We'll be looking at 446 units being added to our tax roll once these are built out and receive their certificate of occupancy. In the packet was also included the municipal service plan that I previously mentioned that identifies the service providers for the development. And at this time, we're recommending that you approve the voluntary annexation request, and I'm here for any questions.
Questions, council? Move to approve? Nope. Public hearing.
Los Siento.
Okay, no questions. So I'm going to open the public hearing. Wait, we have a question before I open the public hearing. Councilperson Foster, go ahead. Okay, so we're going to open the public hearing at 9:10 PM. Do we have anyone signed up for the public hearing, Madam City Secretary? No, we do not. Then I'm going to close the public hearing at 9:10 PM. Okay, so have you found your questions yet? Move to approve. Have a motion to approve from Councilperson Plunkett, a second from Councilperson Meyer. All right.
Okay. So really, just the difference is they're submitting prior to development plans versus time of final plating.
So could you clarify the question?
Okay, so I'm looking at the background history. That's, I'm just trying.
They went from preliminary plat. That's when it was supposed to be done, but.
Oh, are you talking about the development agreement and the annexation sequencing? Sure. So previously, the development, yeah, no, no, totally get it now. Okay. So previously, the development agreement had actually contemplated annexation much further in the future, at the time of final plat, if not further from then. But the problem, or not the problem, the unique circumstance that we ran into is the development agreement has development standards that are more designed to what we call city standards. That's a more tight cross-section, right? That's typically 55.5 feet of right-of-way with utilities underneath the street and storm drain. Now, if they go to develop that development style without being annexed into the city limits, the roadblock they received was the county really only accepts a rural cross-section, correct? So they wanted to go ahead and expedite their timeline for annexation so that when they move forward with what we call a public improvement plan, which is basically the design of the subdivision that lays out that cross-section that I just previously talked about, they could go forward and have it approved because the county was refusing to approve any plans that were designed to a more urban street standard and not a rural cross-section. And that, of course, is what their model is based off of.
Okay, so, but in our, when we have the preference of when we annex, it would be at final plating? That's our normal preference in the normal flow, or it doesn't matter?
No, I actually like, I mean, my personal preference, annex ahead of time because then from cradle to grave, you're within our development process, you're within our standards, and you're within our timeline. And there's not the mixing of inter-agency review where you have a separate set of standards for the county versus the city.
That's what I wanted to know.
And we collect the property tax as well, the whole time, so, yeah. Okay, we have a motion on the table, a second, we've had a question. And anything else, any other discussion, council? Okay, we're going to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. So now we're going to move on to item 16B. Consider and act on the first reading of ordinance number 2025-50, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Chapter 13, Utilities. Article 1302, Water and Wastewater Rates and Charges by Enacting Section 1302.13, titled Utility Pass Through Fees, and move to include on the May 27, 2025, agenda for a second reading. It's you again.
Aye. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Good evening again. So in your packet, essentially what I explained, and I'll explain for the public, is, as you all know, tariffs have become a thing that are now being issued, and that's fine, but with those tariffs come additional costs. The city recently received an invoice for a set of 100 water meters. It was approximately 100 water meters we had ordered, and there was a tariff of 5%, which totaled out to $785.05, so roughly 785 per meter. What we're looking to do at this time is just adopt language that would reserve, and I put specifically in the language that we will reserve the right to. So it doesn't always mean that we have to, just in the right circumstance. For instance, if a developer... For instance, if a developer's coming in, we know we have developments that are coming in, like Ironwood, that's going to be thirteen hundred units, Valverde seventeen hundred units, things of that nature. If we're ordering a bulk set of meters that is going to be cost prohibitive because of the tariffs, that we will reserve the right to pass through that tariff fee. It does allow some discretion. It doesn't mandate that we have to pass it through, so there is flexibility to work with certain developments. For instance, if we were needing to order a meter for a community asset like the food pantry, we could work with them and not so much worry about passing through that cost. So it allows the city to have discretion. And so essentially, that's what the language is looking to do, is just give us a tool. Furthermore, I did point out in your packet that one of our nine focus areas is fiscal responsibility, which is further defined as fiduciary responsibility. And essentially, we want to make sure that as a city, we have a balanced budget. And one of the things that that means to us is that development helps pay for itself when the circumstances are appropriate. I also have Mr. Curtis Ervin here this evening. He has some information that he can provide you guys regarding utility costs and fees because, oh, my gosh, I said Ervin. And by Ervin, I meant Hancock. They're, Lord, it's late. Okay. Curtis, I know who you are.
Who's Curtis?
We have Curtis Hancock here, and he's the expert in his operations, so I wanted him to have a chance to speak because he knows his business best.
Thank y'all. Guess, do y'all have any questions? This is the first one we've seen, but the way it is, if we don't get there now, what's going to happen next time? Five percent, a hundred meters is seven hundred dollars. What's going to happen when we start doing a lift station for somebody or a pump or motor, and we're talking about big money?
Sure, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is it always to the customer, or sometimes it's the developer? Like, who's the, who does it get passed through to? Like, sometimes it's an individual resident, sometimes it's a bulk?
It's always the customer, me, whether it's the developer or a resident. They're still my customer. So, yeah, it's the customer.
Okay, thanks.
And then I guess the developer passes it on to their customer?
That, that's right.
And so on, and so on, yeah.
The builder typically pays the tap fee. The builder then passes that tap fee with some exponential costs along. Unless you're a resident and you're adding an ADU, for example, and you want that ADU to have its own meter. That's a difference.
To give you an idea, these, these meters run about a hundred and fifty-five dollars. That's where that seven dollars is coming into. But along with each meter, you also have a radio goes with it, and it's about a hundred and sixty-five dollars on that one. So you're looking about three hundred and twenty-five dollars. So you're going to add up pretty quick. Instead of seven, it's going to be about fifteen dollars every time we set a meter that's extra. We, we charge three hundred dollars for connect. We're already in the hole at three twenty-five, plus the tariff of another fifteen dollars. So, I mean, it's either one way or another. And this is just a way for, when tariffs go away, price drops, pack down, well, we don't have to enforce them, but we won't have nothing to enforce.
Okay, Council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve from Councilperson Foster, a second from Councilperson Plunkett. Any other discussion, Council? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. That's sixteen Bravo. Sixteen Charlie, consider an act on the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash fifty-one, establishing fifteen point eight four one zero acres located at fifteen hundred Farm Street, Bastrop, Texas, as designated, and move to include on the May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five agenda for a second reading. Ms. Terry Moore.
So, thank you very much for being here and serving. It's a big job, and I'm grateful that you're doing it for our community. I wanted to point out that the property that we're talking about is fifteen hundred Farm Street. This is property that the council purchased in August of last year. What we're trying to do is preserve it as parks, parkland. Just for the public's information, once we designate property as parkland, it has to go back to the voter before we can do anything with it. So it preserves it until that, if there's a need for that, and it is a big deal to have to change it. The other thing I'd like to point out is that when we designate this as parkland, we become one hundred percent compliant with Texas Parks and Wildlife. We built a water plant in a park in violation of a grant, and we've been trying to get back into compliance so we can apply for additional grants. It is important to note that most, every park that we have in the city was funded in some way by Texas Parks and Wildlife. So for us to get back into compliance is really important. So by passing this and designating this as parkland, you have accomplished that. So unless you have any questions, I would just.
Motion.
Okay, yes?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Compliance.
Second.
Have a motion to approve from Councilperson Foster, a second from Councilperson Low. Plunkett, you got your, your light on?
Yeah, I just had a question. Would this, would designating it parkland prevent future councils from being able to allow, let's say, a vendor, if we're going to put this three-hole, you know, golf thing in?
It's still designated as a park.
I understand that we could use it as that, but would it, would it disallow, like, let's say, somebody wanted to operate it, that golf course? Would they be able to or not? They would? Okay, that's the main thing I want to do. I don't like the, I don't like to tie the hands of future councils if I can avoid it.
Well, you can't. That's, even if you, even if you wanted to or liked it, you can't do it.
Well, it makes it really hard if we do this.
Yes, this, this does makes it really hard. But, so to bring a third party on to manage the golf course, for example, that's a contract that we've not given, we're not giving the park back to. They're just managing the operation.
Right, but having it designated as parkland doesn't keep us from doing that. That's what I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay, Council, any other discussion? We have a motion to approve on the table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion sixteen C passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
So we jumped around a little bit. Is anyone aware of anything we missed? Yeah, I think we went back and got it too. I've kind of double-checked. So that takes us to item number seventeen, which. Move to adjourn. Oh, hold on, hold on. Hold on.
I'm trying to get there for you.
Councilperson Low, would you like to make a motion?
Adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We are adjourned.